Alrighty. So first we have minutes approval for July 22, 2013, which were emailed to us. Thank you Marion for doing that. I'd accept a motion for the minutes of July 22, 2013.
Motion to approve the minutes of July 22.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Did anybody have any questions concern?
I actually did.
Okay Matthew, please share.
I don't think I made the motion to create the bylaw for a year moratorium, but that's alright, it's not a big deal. Is Sean on the plane? I think this stuff can actually come up in discussion later.
Okay, but in the minutes they were okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't see any major problems.
For your information, Matthew, the minutes are taken from the disk that he records in the recording studio.
Oh, okay.
So that anything we say is on that disk. So if you have any questions, let me know and I'll pull the disk.
Sure, no problem.
Yeah, Marjorie goes right from the disk. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Alright, number three, appointments at 6:45, so we'll go down to committee reports.
Sure.
Because I don't see them here as of yet.
Okay.
So the first we have is MJTC Matthew.
There was no meeting?
They did not have a meeting for August.
Okay. MRPC is me, we did have a meeting last Tuesday, and it was a very quick, the chair was on vacation, so it was a very quick, probably 20-minute meeting. There was not a lot of discussion, it kind of went through just pending action items that the MRPC has been working on, and I have the agenda that had all of that for you. Thank you. Alright. School Building Committee Nathan.
Okay, well, there's been, I believe, two meetings since the last we met. I missed the most recent one because I was on vacation out of town for the week.
Good for you.
Thank you. And, yeah, so, I believe there have been, so, the big news is the MSBA approved our latest, the latest version of our plan.
Fantastic.
That was a big milestone.
Great job.
Uh, yeah, no, it's exciting. The other big news is, I believe that Loxie sent a fairly widespread email, maybe it went to the school mailing list, I don't know how far it went. Did folks on this board get the email from Loxie about, okay, I'll get that to you, I apologize for not sending, I should just forward those things automatically.
I don't think any of us have kids in this.
Right. Okay, gotcha, gotcha. It could, it might have been a school distribu, I didn't look at what the distribution was, I should have looked at it. I'll forward that to you. Basically, I mean, Loxie talks about a lot of the progress to date, and she also puts links to several of the new venues online that they're using to communicate information about the school building project. They have a Twitter feed, they have a Facebook page, they have this, they still have the School Building Committee webpage, which links off of, I think you can go to the school page or whatever, but those links are all there, and I'll forward you that, everyone that mail. I encourage you to, you know, like it on Facebook, follow it on Twitter.
I did like it on Facebook. Mike Mapplin, the chair, had sent a universal like it on Facebook, so I did go on Facebook and like it.
Good.
And look at the verbiage there on Facebook.
Great, great, yeah, I mean, because the more people like it, the more it gets exposed to their networks. I would even say if you can, I don't know, I'm pretty bad at Facebook, but forward it to your, you post it on your page, there's like a button you push which makes it go into your history stream, or if your friends see it. Basically, get the word out so folks can see it. I mean, the goal is to like, get people to have an awareness so they can learn about the developments. And I think the, I think the School Building Committee's made some good progress there, and the seeds have been sown to sort of start spreading the word out.
Okay.
About what's going on, and help people stay informed. They seem to be updating that website pretty regularly, and there's a map that looks something like this one. It's probably updated a little bit, because this was what, a handout from like, a month ago or something?
Okay.
But, uh, (laugh) but you can hold that.
Very nice.
And then on the other side's the floor plans, and it's, and that's on Facebook, I mean, that's on all those, all those pages, it's been posted to all of them, Facebook, Twitter, the School Building Committee webpage. I think it was in the Herald this week, if, uh, the Ledger, I'm sorry, that, that map was in the, you saw a picture of that map in the Ledger this week. So hopefully, awareness of what's going on with the School Building Committee is growing, and if you're aware of it, you know, like I said, tell your friends, post it on your Facebook page or whatever. If you don't feel like the information's getting to you, contact Loxie, send an email to Loxie, or someone on the School Building Committee like myself, and we'll do our best to, to make sure that you get that information if you don't feel like you're getting it.
You can scan that and send it out if you'd like, to the board.
To the board? It's up to the board. You're welcome, I think, Marion, if you find what's online, it may be more current than even that, like, that one's old, old, might be a little bit out of date now.
Okay.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think that's, there was, there's probably a few other things, but that's probably enough for now.
Okay, perfect, thank you, great job. Alright, Building Reuse Committee Damon, what's going on there?
Alright, we had a meeting last Monday, and we did a lot of organization as far as task force, but we essentially, after a great discussion, came up with four options to study thoroughly, as far as what to do with the old Passios building. And I'll just give them to you, they're in no particular order of importance here, but one would be to determine the real cost of demolition for the Passios building with the intent of leaving the property vacant, or as a practice field for future use, until the town needs a land for something else. Another would be to determine the programmatic needs for the Ritter Building, the Town Hall, the Brooks House, and the Eagle House, and come up with the cost to renovate the Passios building, to house all those facilities. Also, checking into if they even want to move into that building, I know the Eagle House might not want to be, leave their building at all, but we're going to look into that thoroughly. And another option being, determine the needs for those same uses, but to tear down the Passios building and rebuild the new municipal building for the town. Again, housing the Ritter Building, Town Hall, Brooks House, and Eagle House altogether, under one roof.
In a brand-new building?
In a brand-new building.
Oh wow, that was, that's a new one I haven't heard of.
Yeah, and number four would be, produce a request for proposal from the private sector to find a developer to either renovate or demolish and rebuild on the Passio site. The intent of this option would be to provide a meaningful reuse that adds to the life and viability of the town center at a minimal cost to the community. So, that one seems to have a lot of possibilities, again, putting out for requests for proposals from the private sector, we could get ideas that no one's thought of yet, as far as the reuse, but there's a lot of things to consider, as far as how you break it up, what the property delineation would be, how you treat a commercial entity next to the school campus like that, and all kinds of other issues that we're going to look into.
Alright. Get a kind of care in there. Okay. Great job, thank you. Anything else?
Not on that one.
Alright, capital, is it, alright, Quick Capital Planning Committee Marion, how are we doing with that?
We are going to be sending out all the paperwork on September 3 to each department.
On the 3rd?
Mm-hmm.
And that's the new paperwork you, your team built?
Yes, that we created, it's, well, we updated, so to speak.
Okay, perfect. Alright, so committee reports are done, so now we can go into our appointment with High Field Village, High Field Village, our Mass Ave, Mr. Ofield and Mr. Godfrey are with us this evening, welcome.
Good evening. How's everybody tonight?
Good, how are you?
I'm fine, beautiful day.
I know.
We're here before you just to go through, because we're of the 14 billion requests for extensions that we've given you guys. I know there's a few, a few new faces.
Yeah, we have two new ones, Matthew on the end.
Hi, Matt.
And Damon are our new ones this year.
Hey Damon, how are you?
This is Kent, just to distinguish which one is which.
Yes.
This is Kent Ofield.
New England Engineering Group.
Was it really 14 billion?
Yeah, pretty close, maybe 14. Um, for your, for, just for your information, what we're done, what I like to do is kind of touch upon the stuff that went on before. I did bring a few life-size plans to get, so you guys could bring them home and scribble on them, whatever you want to do with them, but it's, uh...
Thank you.
Better off showing them on a full-size plan versus, I know Marjorie asked for a full set, but it's, unless you want to sit there at your kitchen table and just push, piecemeal them all together, it's, uh, much easier. What I like to do, Joanne, is I'd like to say, to go through what, kind of what we went through last time, the last update for Damon and Matt's beneficial.
That was going to be my request, is just to quickly, we started in 2000 and...
I think it was 1966 when we started this project, but, you know...
That's the year I was born.
(laugh) Basically, the, the project went through several years of changes. We had, started off with a 192 lots, conventional, coming through, I think you might have seen the EIR that we've put through, with some of the, the changes and some of the options that we developed over the years, some going out Maple Parkway, some coming out the Mass Ave, some are coming out to Pope Road. I think we've had many, many, many meetings over the, over the course, trying to find out which way was going to be beneficial. This, the plan that's before you now was basically, correct me if I'm wrong, Marion is, is the end result of 99 point, 99% of approval, with, up withstanding the items for sewer, as well as the comments from Steve Meyersden on behalf of the board. Those changes are all incorporated in these plans. The changes over the, over the last, the very first part of the, for this year, was trying to get the sewer allocated. We went back and forth before sewer, two or three years ago, to try to find out where we would bring the sewer. Everything flew, flowed back to Northfield Road, and it came back, and we proposed pump station. Well, as you know, Lunenburg has many pump stations, and the Sewer Commission did not want another pump station. Few more meetings later, between the Sewer Commission, and the hour, and the clients, and the DPW, we finally said, okay, we, we'd like to bring the sewer down Maple Parkway. One of the biggest thing there was, we didn't want to have to rebuild Maple Parkway and White Street. Jack has then come back and said, he was, has to rebuild Maple Parkway anyways, and it's, it's in his program over the last, over the next five years. So we, we basically said, okay, we'll put the sewer in, we'll pulverize, get you ready for paving, which is what he'd had to do anyways, saves the town some money, saves us some money, that actually helped out in the whole project, of the grand scheme of things of getting rid of that pump station. And coupled with that pump station was the access to Mass Ave. We said, okay, we don't want to go down Mass Ave, because DOT said that they didn't like, that would come out almost right where the car dealer place is, that's where the exit would be. That was a problem, that was problematic, DOT said there was a lot of accidents in that one, since they put in, you know, Walmart, the hill, the snow, and everything else, so...
Want you to know what car body was at?
Kyle Loxley, yeah, the Asian Imperial, right.
Yeah, that lovely intersection that we already have going.
Oh yeah.
Yes. So that's, so we said, DOT did, wasn't amenable to that, so we backed off on that. We also had an access down, going down, all the way down the hill, then out to Maple Parkway. Environmentally speaking, that wasn't beneficial, and then, which brought us to the clustering, and then the planned residential development of the project. Now shrinking all the lots, doing a cluster, town gets a big chunk of land, there's been some talk about that land as a new well field for the town, for the town, town water. Less roadway, less disturbance. The very first plans on this, we had the wet, the wetlands, we were going to be disturbing 4,000 square feet of wetlands. In the newer plans, we have corrugated arch bridges, so now we're disturbing zero wetlands right now. So environmentally, that's where we are on the plans. As this was all going through, we had sewer, we had a change of sewer on the sewer board, there was a lot of other people that brought in, there was discussions whether, and this going back to the, what we call the tripod agreement, which was CBL Associates for Walmart, George Smith, or Bob Loveroni, and Roy Smith for the golf course. That got, that got outdated, there were some discussions whether that was still valid or not. We basically tipped a hat and said, okay, let's rewrite that agreement. We rewrote that agreement back to the Sewer Commission, going back and forth. They needed more sewer allocated, so they had to go back and go get a new IMA, intermunicipal agreement with the town of Fitchburg. All that's going on at the same time as MEPA. Now, trying to paraphrase all this, I know this is a lot to throw at you, but when you have MEPA, you have MEPA, you can't get your sewer extension permit without MEPA. You can't get your MEPA until you get your IMA. You can't get our IMA until we get our sewer agreement. So that's, that's how these, we're all playing over the last, in the course of the last two years, is what we've been working on, and you can see that, as far as the development over the last two years, has been much more prudent than it was over the past three years because of the economy. So now, as I understand it, Sewer Commission meets tomorrow night, we have the final, actually I have copies of the old sewer agreement if you want to take a look at it. I know it was changed recently, they were going back and forth, our proponent and the Sewer Commission was, they had some wording. Tomorrow night, it's our hopes that that'll be solidified, so then we can, then they can take that, and then go for the IMA and get their sewer flow back from the town of, city of Fitchburg. So now, now that we've got one step done, in the midst of all this, we now have our draft EIR done, and we're hoping at the same time the IMA is approved, we will have our final EIR done at the same time, as well as final, standing in front of you, the next time I stand in front of you, would be, we have everything, we have our IMA, we have our sewer agreement, because if we don't have the IMA, you don't have the sewer agreement, if you don't have the sewer agreement, you don't have, we don't have a project, because we don't have sewer. So, with that being said, the next time we go before you would be, in hopes that we have everything for sewer complete, because it has been a long road. That's kind of in a nutshell where we are, and where, you know, did I miss anything, John?
No.
And this, John Godfrey, he's the proponent and the owner?
I'm John Godfrey, and I have...
Please speak into the mic.
Sorry, my name is John Godfrey, and I am one of the two partners who is funding and developing this property with Kent's assistance, and Kent is, is perhaps a little bit modest in that what he's told you is quite a litany, and he has done this himself and kept the, the many permits that are required, the interface with the town, he's, in some cases, helped the town interface with itself, and we believe, as Kent said, that we'll have a final sewer agreement with the town tomorrow, and then that will allow the town to finalize its agreement with Fitchburg. In the course of this, we filed an environmental impact report with MEPA, Mass Environmental, in March, and they came back with comments at the end of April, and one of their comments was they wanted to see a greenhouse gas analysis. So, this is something new, required by the state of Massachusetts, I think Massachusetts may be only one of two states that requires this, so it's not second nature to Kent, and he asked me if he could hire an expert who knows about these things, and at the same time, I had an acquaintance who's quite familiar with air issues, so we had a meeting, and my expert looked at, at everything that Kent has told you that he has done from a regulatory viewpoint, plus the design, the 66 lots, the sewer, the water, the gas, the electricity, the town, the intersection that has to be modified a bit, and on the way out, my friend said to me, did one guy really do all of this? So I took that as a, as a compliment to Kent, that he's been juggling quite a lot, and we now, in part, in response to the rebound in the housing market, we're motivated to, to get this finalized once and for all. So, we, we're now a little bit at the mercy of the agencies. We expect a response from MEPA on our response to their comments, to our filing on the 27th of August, and we would expect that, that since we've had several iterations with them, that their comments, at this point, would typically be few, and then, once we answer those, they have a statutory 60-day period, because they have to publish the environmental impact report, once they believe it's, it's in final form. They have to publish it for 60 days, they have to publish in the Environmental Register, so there are some time periods that are statutory that we, that cannot be short-circuited, but the, the long and the short of it is, we think we should be done with all of this by the 1st of January. That would be, that would certainly be our hope, so that in terms of the extension, which we're operating under currently, which is an extension of this board's approval of our preliminary plan, which expires tomorrow, I think if we had another six months, we should be clear, finalized, and back to the town, to this board, to sign our subdivision plan in that length of time, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, the only, the only caveat to that is obviously Fitchburg. We don't, you know, we don't, it's going to go, the IMA is going to be before their, their board. That's why we say six months, because if it takes six months to get an IMA through Fitchburg, not talking down on Fitchburg, then it, typically, it takes one month for the first reading, the next reading, and then they, they vote on it, so it should take three months for them to get that. However, knowing municipalities as far as sewer, because sewer is very, is very contentious as far as who gets what, Lunenburg is going to Fitchburg. If it was strictly a decision with Fitchburg, that'd be one thing, but going before Fitchburg for another IMA, we don't know.
So a few things are out with our control, but, but we've, we've progressed it and are now motivated to progress and do everything that we can as expeditiously as possible. The, the first item of which we'll tie up tomorrow, we hope, which is our agreement with the town of Lunenburg for, for the sewer allocation for, for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Matthew, we'll start down with you, any questions?
Excuse me. This, this has nothing to do with the increase in units?
No, the, the number of units has been constant for, I would say, Kent, at least three years. We started out...
It's always been 66 units.
It's...
I'm sorry.
It, in the very beginning, we took a look at the acreage, and we took a look at the, at the zoning rules, and came up with a possibility of 192. I mean, that was the theory, theoretical maximum, but...
192 units was a lot.
Once we got into the design, we felt it was better to, to do a development of 66, and to cluster the houses, meaning that the houses are on lots that are smaller than an acre, but that a number of acres is then given over to the town to remain forever wild. So, so on the, the number of units divided over the total number of acres is, is way less than one unit per acre.
I'm sorry, that was the wrong topic.
Okay.
Are you good?
I am, yes.
Damon?
Nope, I'm good.
Nathan?
I just want to, yeah, so I, I, um, what I, sorry about this, this is, so I have a question, I wanted to sort out here, some, so I straightened my mind the dependencies that you guys outlined, you know, it's a pretty complicated process, and I just want to, you know, we're talking about extensions, and it sounds like there's, you know, some pretty reasonable grounds for them, but I just want to understand the dependencies, to the extent that we have, you know, if there's an order in those dependencies, understand that, and to the extent that we understand some likely calendar dates that we expect...
Well, I think, I think more to benefit the board, instead of throwing out dates right here and now, I think, number one, we have one night tomorrow night before the Sewer Commission, you know, so that would be the first, first hurdle. What I, what I would like to entertain is, give you a, a written document as far as, these are the dates, these are the items, I can get you, you know, we can get to this tomorrow, by the way, and tomorrow, it's tomorrow, Tuesday, Wednesday, because we have our meeting tomorrow with the Sewer Commission, and say, these are our milestones, this is dependent on this, and this is dependent on that, if you'd like, I mean, that's just, that way you have it, more of a definitive rather than us throwing out. We can certainly do that, throw out dates here if you want, and kind of go through the dependencies, first, and then maybe, maybe both.
Well, just, just so I have the real, I mean, there was, it sounded like there was like, three or four big moving parts, there's MEPA, which is dependent on the greenhouse gas report and the Fitchburg IMA.
Well, actually, greenhouse gas now, it's, we've done that, so that's, that's being reviewed by, by MEPA, so that's, hopefully, nothing that's going to come up with a red flag, we don't know, until they review it.
Right.
So, that's the, they're obliged to give us a response, including their review of our greenhouse gas analysis by the end of August.
By the end of August, so we'll know something about that, so that's great. So, to get, sign off, or complete the process with MEPA, you need that, that thing you're going to hear about August 27, and you also need the intermunicipal agreement to be completed?
That's right, because we have, the intermunicipal agreement with Fitchburg can't be signed, my understanding, they're not going to go to get that signed until they know that actual flow from Lunenburg, i.e., our flow, and any other flow that, that the town may have, not just our project, you know, or other projects that might be in town. They're going to take all that and say, okay, we have 20, for instance, we have 27,000 gallons per day for ours, somewhere on, the other side of town may have 5,000, so they're going to take all that and they're going to go to IMA. So until we have that signed in the agreement with us, the Sewer Commission will then go to Fitchburg and finalize the IMA.
Right, so just, so just back, I just want to make sure I understand, just MEPA itself, so there's IMA, there's the stuff for the 27th, and then there's everything you've filed to date with MEPA.
That's correct. MEPA on August 27 could come back and ask us further questions about the submission that we gave to them on June, June 27. We, we filed a three-inch-thick document with them on the 1st of April. At the end of, 60 days later, they came back to us with some comments and questions, which we answered. So now we're down from three inches to maybe a quarter of an inch. So now we will get their review of our quarter inch of documents at the end of August. One of the things they reviewed with the greenhouse, was the greenhouse gas analysis. We hope they'll say, good analysis, and tick the box, but we, we know that one item they have stipulated is that they cannot give us a final environmental approval until Lunenburg has the intermunicipal sewer agreement with Fitchburg, because the, the sewer from the project has to go somewhere. So we know that's an outstanding one, maybe they'll come up with one or two other things.
Okay, so I think...
The process of MEPA is, you have environmental notification form, which was done way back.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we have the draft EIR, then you have your, your final EIR, so you have DEIR, then the FEIR. Anywhere between that, they can ask for more information. So at the, when we submitted our DEIR, they wanted an SDAR, supplemental.
With the greenhouse gas, and, okay, gotcha.
So we're in the middle, we're, we're in the middle between the DAR and that FEIR with that.
So if, let's say hypothetically, if they said greenhouse gas stuff looked great, you're good with that, how, what's the delta between that draft EIR and the final EIR at that point?
It all, well, it all depends, we can't file, and I presume they, in their very certificate, they give a certificate after every one of these processes? after every one of these processes. The last certificate said, what is the position of the IMA and the sewer within the town of Lunenburg? That, you know, we can, that delta, if Pittsburgh is quick, boom.
Okay.
If Pittsburgh's not quick-
Okay.
So to answer your question, I don't know.
You don't know for sure, gotcha. And so back to the IMA, the IMA is dependent upon, if I understood what you said correctly, a sewer agreement between the town of Lunenburg and your project?
Between, the agreement between our project and the town of Lunenburg is called a sewer allocation. So we ask, we say, we have 66 units, we want to build 66 four-bedroom homes, that translates to 27,900 gallons a day of sewer. We're requesting to put into Lunenburg sewer. Lunenburg, though, does not own a sewage treatment plant, so it has an intermunicipal agreement with Pittsburgh-
Right.
Which does. So they will take our 27,000 gallons and any other additions that may be topical, and go down to Pittsburgh and say, we want an intermunicipal agreement for, say, 60,000 gallons per day.
Right.
Whatever they need.
And that will, as far as for our parochial concern, if they obtain whatever number of gallons from Pittsburgh, 29,000 falls back on us, we can do our project. But until they have the revised agreement with Pittsburgh, legally, we can't submit the sewer to Lunenburg, which can't submit it to Pittsburgh.
So they can't give you your sewer allocation until they-
They can give us our allocation, but it is contingent upon them executing an intermunicipal agreement.
Right.
So what we'll finalize tomorrow is the agreement between the project and the town. So the town and the project will be on one page and in the same boat-
Yep.
Looking to send additional sewer to Pittsburgh.
You got two different agreements. Neither one is, neither one's really dependent on the other. We don't, we're not negotiating with Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
That's the town Lunenburg negotiates with Pittsburgh.
Okay, so this is, thanks for, is there anything else, so it sounds, is there anything else that that agreement tomorrow depends on?
The only thing is-
God, I hope not.
And since, since MIPA has the, had a crack at our first draft EIR, and they, and we know what their questions were, and we talked to them, right? So my guess is that whatever they're going to have, this isn't gonna be any great surprise come at the end of August. There may be, there may be some clarifications, but it can't be much, because we've had too much dialogue.
If you had, in closing, if you looked at the certificate, the two, there was probably three big things, three big key points in the whole seven pages of the certificate. One was sewer, what's the status of the IMA. The other one was greenhouse gas, and the other one was alternatives in the wetlands and the environmental destruction of what, you know, if you went with a 192. Because we have, believe it or not, we have to substantiate the 192 versus the 64. Even though this looks great on paper, you'd say, we're giving this, all this land back to the town, we still have to substantiate why. They could go back and, I mean, they could have came back and said, we'd like the 192 option.
Yeah, the form, it's all-
Which Marion would probably-
You would go through the same form and procedure-
Got on the phone.
If you started with 66 and wanted to go to 192, as if you started with 192 and wanted to go to 66.
Right.
Gotcha, okay. So thanks for going over this. That's pretty much it for questions. I guess the reason I, sorry, asked so many questions, I wanna understand what, in my opinion, you know, regarding extension.
I want to ask a million and one, if you have a million and one.
I don't have the-
And all due res-
You ask that.
And all due respect, I mean, it's one of those, you know, and I sit there, and, you know, and when you do the extensions, it's, you know, I sit there, and I know what I'm doing here. I know as far as what I've got in front of me, as far as workload, to do these plans. When you get the extension, it's one piece of paper, you just say, another extension. Now you know, now you know why. And I'll be glad to, anytime between now and, you know, I know the extension tomorrow, it's due tomorrow, so we'll have to get another one for approval for you tomorrow.
Right.
So.
Yeah, oh crap, right, okay.
Unless, I mean, we can, we can handwrite, you know, we can handwrite one and sign it tonight if you want, if you want to-
Yeah, I think we probably, that's what that was, yeah, because I think we should probably try to work that out, if you want an extension, if you could possibly submit that tonight, I think for this submission process. We can't approve the extension unless they submit it.
Well, actually, actually, you can, because we're here in person.
Right, yeah, we can extend it.
We can accept, we-
Yes, we can extend it tonight.
A letter is an affidavit of an extension, so we can, we can stand before you and say-
I'm just waiting for you to finish questions, because I have questions.
You have a question? Okay, why don't you, just one, just in closing, I mean, I think, based on what I'm hearing, my recommendation for the board to entertain would be, let's, let's plan, if they request an extension, grant one through, like, end of September, and meet again at the end of September, to see how things went with a Lunenburg sewer committee tomorrow, see how it went with, or not, maybe not end of September, maybe middle-
I was gonna say, maybe November 1st.
I was looking at our meeting schedule, maybe the first meeting, yeah. See how it went with your EIR supplemental, and also check on progress of the IMA, because I think then, with those two things, I'd rather, I'd like to do smaller incremental extensions if needed, rather than huge ones, because that'll allow-
I agree.
That way, we don't have to drag you in to tell us the whole story every time, because we'll forget.
And I agree, and if, you know, and if, you know, such a time comes that we ask for an extension November 1st, for another one to, I'm just looking ahead, saying it's gonna happen, to January 1st, then, you know, if you want us to come back, we can definitely say-
What the board could anticipate is, if we come back after two or three months, we will show, from the litany of things we told you today, we've chipped away three or four of them, and there's still two left, and we have no control over Pittsburgh, and why and how and when they sign intermunicipal agreements, hopefully, quickly, but if it's, you know what town politics are like, it could, it could be kicked around for some totally unrelated reason.
Absolutely, we just wanna make sure that we're doing our job and staying in touch with the process and-
But just, just rest assured, in the end, when the dust settles, we want to have, you know, 66 new families in Lunenburg, enjoying the view, and paying taxes and fees to the town. That's what we're after.
No, no, it sounds like a great project, yep. Thanks, I'm totally done.
Because now, I have a couple of questions, because sewer, and I want to be clear, the chairman of the board actually came to our meeting to express, this should not be on hold for sewer whatsoever. You're doing a separate thing with them on allocation, has nothing to do with us holding up the plan and the approval process of the plan.
Nope.
So I just wanna make sure everybody understands that, because the sewer commission keeps reiterating-
It's not-
The Highfield Village has nothing to do with them, it's not getting delayed because of them.
It's not, it's not them, it's the state process. If we didn't have MIPA, we'd be done with this.
Okay, right.
Basically, I mean, it's, to throw another wrench in there, we got the sewer extension permit for the state DUP. Can't go, you can't get your sewer extension permit until you have MIPA. So you can put that and another one on your list, on that.
And, so I guess for me, I need clarification, Kent, and I don't know if that's Marion or yourself, because plans come in front of us, and in March 1st, 2004, you came in front of us with the preliminary plan. We take that plan, and in 14 days, 21, whatever that magic number is, we take seven copies, we send them to all the departments, the departments give feedback, we kinda listen to that feedback, and then we, we start the whole peer review process in that development. So we really don't worry about the sewer and how they're gonna hook up. That's not on our, and once we send these out, it goes to those departments, and then you go to conservation sewer. So I guess, why didn't that happen? I wasn't here in 2004. Why in 2004 did that not happen, and the ball has just kept rolling?
It did happen.
Well, it did, it did happen, if I may.
So we approved the plan.
As far as a preliminary, you approve the preliminary, the preliminary's done. It's, now we're in, obviously, definitive.
The definitive, right.
So we're holding off a definitive, because the sewer, we went, was whole different, we went, as I said, we went out the front, we had pump station, and then with that, with all the access. We can certainly submit, resubmit all the plans to you and finalize that, but because it's a planned residential development, under your bylaws, and not only, it's not just planning board, and correct my form, I'm wrong, it's planned residential development, it kinda sucks in the conservation, the sewer, and everybody altogether. It's not, it's not a normal subdivision, as a definitive would be, because it's a planned residential subdivision. So it's, you got a lot more, you guys have a little bit more grab into us, if you would, but also, at the same time, a little more give, at the same time, i.e., less, you know, lots of smaller, less roadways, and so forth. So that's where we were as far as a sewer, just going back and forth, whether we were gonna get the sewer or not the sewer, because if we didn't get the sewer, all the road way was gonna change.
Right.
Because now we have to get septic systems, and then we're gonna be out there soil testing, and it's gonna be big lots. So that's kinda why, you know, I speak for Marion, that's why we were in a holding pattern, because we didn't know which way we were gonna go, because sewer was, even though sewer doesn't hold on to this project, it does, because you don't know what your development protocol, what your development's gonna be.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so it sounds like, I mean, so it sounds like sewer committee is doing, you know, you know, doing everything they can, and it sounds like-
Yeah, sewer, they've been great. Sewer commission has, Barbara, and the whole, and the whole commission has worked with us, we've met with them, and as John said, probably more in the last six months than we did in the last six years. So we're definitely moving forward, the commission is, you know, they're, they want the, you know, more people on their sewer line, because we're building the sewer line, so they get more user fees to help substantiate and maintain the system.
Right, because now people on White Meadow Brook will be on-
And that's all, now that's all gravity, so we're not, that's not, we're not adding a pump station. So to Mr. Rodickwin's benefit, you know, his, you know, he helped, that was a big, and the sewer commission helped, that was great.
So, so yeah, so just to finish that thought, though, it sounds like the moving this forward does depend on their continued engagement, and it sounds like they're engaged immediately tomorrow. I guess, do they understand kind of the urgency behind the intermunicipal agreement? Like, do they have, have they talked to you about their calendar for when they're gonna go to Pittsburgh?
Well, one thing, we have a document to sign with them tomorrow that we've discussed back and forth, and I believe that's final, and we can sign that tomorrow. But one of my objectives tomorrow is to understand, you know, our 29,000 gallons, is it 29,000 out of 30, or is it 29,000 out of 100? Are we one of a kind, or, you know, one of 10? And where does the rest of it stand? And how tied is our project to items beyond our control? I mean, we understand that the operation, internal operations of the city of Pittsburgh are beyond our control, but are there others within Lunenburg that they're in a similar discussion with? So if you, if you said to them, why don't you go down tomorrow afternoon and finalize with Pittsburgh, are they going to say, are they going to give a story of four or five other dependencies for them? We, I don't know the answer to that, but I will find that out tomorrow.
Gotcha.
I'm thinking that it's, that we may be the last straw, that's what I'm hoping, but I don't know that for sure.
I don't either.
So-
So looking at, I'm looking at a calendar.
Okay.
I'm not looking at my texts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I want you to think you're talking and I'm reading emails. I'm looking at my calendar, because you were looking at November.
November, right, so your first meeting in November would be?
November 11th, I believe, is Veterans Day.
Yep.
If I'm, if I'm correct.
Second Monday.
Yeah, and I believe, as I just said, the second Monday is November 11th, which is, I believe, Veterans Day. It's a holiday.
Yeah, right.
Right, November 11th is Veterans Day.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Right, am I, am I right? I feel like I'm talking. Thank you.
From behind the curtain.
So we would be closed as a municipal building on that day, so we would not be meeting, we can't meet if the town hall was closed.
Okay.
So we would not, we would not have that, that meeting. So we'd be looking at, do you have something, Nathan, as I'm going on?
Oh, no, are you talking about a date for what, Joanne?
The extension.
The extension.
Oh, I was thinking, just more like September 23rd meeting, or thereabouts.
Oh, okay, and I thought they said-
Well, we thought we were gonna go, then we'd said, maybe a little bit longer.
Uh, okay.
October, I think we said October. Maybe the second, maybe the second meeting in October would be?
Yeah, why don't we do that, October, because, like I said, November 11th's a holiday, we wouldn't be meeting. So it would be October, the second meeting in October would be October 21st.
21st.
Monday, the 21st.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, that's fine with me. Seems like there's a lot happening.
So, and that's the thing, if every other month we see you and know that it's working, everybody's doing their things, everybody's working, I don't have a problem with that. So when we go nine, 10 months-
Right.
And we think you're with sewer, sewer says-
Yeah, September 1st is only a week and a half away.
Right.
Hate to say it, but-
So if you fill out the form, the Monday form, what I call the Monday form, and keep us informed, then the board gets a status report.
I wanna see it, yeah. You know, I wanna see. So 10/21/13, that would be our next seeing you, and hopefully by then, you'd have, you know, four weeks with the sewer commission and IMA, with MIPA, and you'd have some updates just to share with us. And then if we go to January 1st, which was the original, you know, that, that's Monday.
And this, and this works fine, if, I mean, I won't bring John all the way from-
Yeah, no, no, you're, you're fine, yeah.
He's in the offshore, so, I mean, if you want, if you wanna, I can show up on the 13th and-
Yes, we know you've been speaking for the project, yeah.
No.
It's not so bad in Paulus, the beach days.
All right, so then, that would be my, if someone would like to make a motion to extend Highfield Village until Monday, well, we wouldn't go Monday.
Just before we wrap this up, to answer just-
10/22.
Who, so someone on our board spoke to the sewer committee, which is great, who's, is that you or Marion that's talking?
Marion, I did, yeah. And then the chairman of the sewer commission came to our last, televised Mr. Luck.
Yep, that was great.
Yeah, he came in and also said they were working with you on an intermunicipal agreement, having nothing to do with the plan and holding up the plan.
The progress with that board has been excellent.
They're a great board, they're, they're a great board.
It sounds great, I just, I'd be, would it be okay or appropriate for Marion, for us to touch base with them and just make sure they're on the same page with, with what we're hearing from the project team and what we're thinking? I mean, my understanding is, they're gonna be working with the board of selectmen, or the town manager, whoever they have to do to move this. If they sign the agreement, if they sign the agreement with Highfield Village, they're gonna be moving as quickly as they can for the IMA. So just getting a brief statement of their impression of their, their schedule, like, when they're, what their intention is, that would be great.
Yeah, and we did invite them to this meeting.
Oh, great, great.
I did invite them.
She did, she did reach out to Barbara, the business manager of the sewer commission, and invited any of the sewer board to come, because they were working on the IMA, and if they had any questions, and that's why I believe the chair, Mr. Luck, came two weeks ago, just to express his theory of where they are with Highfield Village.
Yeah, I mean, this is far as, what you said about them not holding things up, I don't think, it looks like they're moving fast, but they're, they're like a major player to this move forward. In fact, if we can invite them as well for that 10/21 meeting.
I wanna make sure everybody understands, they're not holding anything up.
No, no.
And if I clarify that, what, you know, what they're saying is, they have their process for sewer, they can approve their sewer, get it approved. You can approve, prove this right now, today, and we can submit all our plans and say, okay, we're done, these are plans, there's a sewer, you can approve it.
But if MIPA comes back, then we'll have to all-
Exactly, so with all that, you know, you can, that's what she's saying, is we don't, you know, even though sewer's there, if there's, if there's a caveat of, or a impetus of the people that are holding it up, it's MIPA.
Right, I wanna be clear that the sewer commission is right on track.
They have not held us up one iota.
There's nothing that, that you're waiting for, so we're not giving an extension because of the sewer commission.
Absolutely not.
I just wanna make sure.
Nope.
Because I think they felt that, when previously, we thought that it was held up with sewer, and sewer was working with you, and that's why we were doing the extensions, that was confusion on.
Okay.
And it was good that they both came, you know, came across.
So if we're not gonna vote on this current state, though, let's, let's see if we can get them to come to that 10/21, because-
Yeah, we'll invite them.
The reality is, if we're not gonna, if we're not gonna vote on this until we have a MIPA up or down, then effectively, even, even though we don't have to, we're sort of making ourselves dependent on the sewer committee pushing the IMA through with, through that process, or whatever, so.
Yeah, and for me, I'm extending it for the developer, and knowing that you're working with other boards in our town, and with MIPA, so that, that's where I'm going, and we'll MIPA. So that, that's where I'm going. And we'll absolutely invite.
Put us, put us, I mean, put it, again, put it right us on the, on the agenda.
Yep.
First thing.
And we'll invite this, the Sewer Department as well.
Sewer Commission.
And, you know, I know Marion will give Barbara a letter explaining why, because she's in contact with Barbara all the time, explaining why we did extend it due to the fact of the IMA. And also I would say, you know, if you hear and ask Barbara if it does get approved, if they're working to keep us in the loop, and then Marion can, you know, keep us in the loop with the IMA as well.
Great.
All right. So I would accept a motion to extend Highfield Village till October 22nd, 2013.
They've requested it sufficiently. They've, they've formally requested this extension at this point. Okay, so we wish, okay, gotcha.
And the Monday meeting is the 21st, so we would go till the 22nd. Because we're meeting with them on the 21st.
Gotcha. I make a motion to extend the, um, the date for the approval, for the, you know, decision on the Highfield Village project to October 22nd, 2013.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Is there anything you guys wanted?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I would also like to follow up. I'd like to follow up tomorrow in writing, just so I have it in writing.
Please.
Even though we're here, it's legal. It's been in writing all along. I'd rather have it in writing all along.
And if you have by chance, and you want to see see Barbara as well.
Absolutely.
Just so she knows, and she could fill her.
Like I have in the, in the emails prior to this.
And she could fill her board in tomorrow night.
Right, right, good.
So that way they know what we did. All right. Nice seeing you. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
See you in two months.
And we'll see you.
Thank you.
See you in a month and a half. All right. Next up, we have Ms. Bydell from the town of Lunenburg. In regards to an A and R for 140, I'm sorry, 1401-1417 Mass Ave, which is the Lunenburg Primary School, if I'm correct. Is that correct?
It's correct. Primary in the property of Hobbs.
And I believe what, what this is, and Carrie can correct me if I'm wrong, just for the board, when they built the primary school, they never submitted an A and R.
Hmm.
And an A and R should have been submitted when they built the primary school. So now we're just fixing that formality. And so now we're looking at the A and R for the primary school.
Gotcha.
I can.
One each.
Take one down, pass it around. Hi, Carrie.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
Hi. So there's, there's just a little bit more to this particular story. This, this actually has to do with the former Hobbs property at 1417 Mass Ave, which actually sits in front of the, the primary school. Um, it's my understanding that when the town surveyed that property, that the primary school sits on to purchase the property, it was determined that the driveway for 1417 Mass Ave was actually on that piece of property that the town purchased for the primary school. So what, um, the town and the homeowner decided to do was to do a land swap. So that the, um, the driveway could be on land owned by 1417 Mass Ave. And then a piece of property in the rear of the property, which didn't interfere with anything, could be given over to the town as, as an exchange. But in order to do that, the town actually had to request um, the legislature for special, special legislation. So back at the annual 2006 town meeting, Article 45 gave the Board of Selectmen permission to petition the General Court, which is the legislature, to do this land swap. Um, so that, that article was approved and the petition was filed with the General Court and it was approved on, um, November 26th, 2007. So at that point in time, that would have been the, the first point in time that we would have put this A and R together. But for a variety of reasons, it wasn't, it wasn't put together and it was just brought to light again when that property was in the process of being sold. There's a new owner of 1417 Mass Ave.
Oh, that's good.
So what is in front of you this evening is that land swap parcel A is town property that is being given over to that property owner. And parcel B is what the town is taking in exchange for that. So we have two steps. The A and R, which is in front of you this evening. And if you approve that, then we need to have the deeds prepared and that will, um, complete this transaction.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions, starting with Matthew?
Um, it looks like the, the areas are more than twice different. And why is there such a large difference in area?
They are, and I, um, honestly, I'm not sure if that's something that you can answer, Marion. This, this occurred before I worked for the town, so I'm not really sure. And I didn't find anything in the file that talked about why there was a difference. Um, so I, I really can't answer that question.
And I can't either because we searched for everything. And we went back to the original people, um, Whitman and Bingham, who did this plan for us. And, um, that's what they had on their records for it. So that was the closest that, between Town Hall and the Planning Office. And I even checked with Conservation and it didn't have a Conservation concern at all. So that, this is what the original, um, engineering firm had on file.
I, I'm assuming that, and I, I didn't mention, but the, the parcel that the town is, um, deeding over is point 11 acres and, and what we're getting back is point 04 acres. I'm, I'm assuming, just looking at the map, that the reason is probably, the, the reason what the town is getting is smaller is that's probably the most that parcel could give and still maintain.
Be a conforming.
Yeah, be a conforming lot.
You're right. You're absolutely right.
That makes sense.
Either that or there was oil under that small part.
I think it was their lawn.
Any other questions, Matthew? Good question.
Um, uh, who, who would have been responsible for not having oversighted that?
Well, this, this was done in the Selectmen's office. Um, the Selectmen's office processed this. And interestingly enough, this was approved November 26th, 2007. I started working for the town December 1st, 2007. And the first time I was made aware of this was probably a couple of months ago. So it was something that Mrs. Hobbs was keeping track of. And unfortunately, in speaking with her daughter, she said this was about the same time that her health started failing. And she, she had meticulous notes up until about this point. And so I think because of that and because I wasn't aware of it in, in our office, it just didn't happen.
Okay.
Satisfied, thank you.
Damon?
I'm all set with it.
Nathan?
I'm fine as well, thanks.
I'm, I'm fine as well. So I would, I would make a motion to accept the A and R submitted?
Yes. You want to sign it tonight? There's no reason not to.
I noticed we didn't have a Mylar. Do you, I know that's one of the requirements that never came over. I don't know if that's. No, it didn't. So.
No, we have the money.
No, I'm talking from Whitman and Bingham. I will get it tomorrow then.
Okay. So we'll wait and sign it? Do you, because you need us to sign the Mylar, right?
Well, you can sign these tonight.
But I still have to come in and sign a Mylar, so.
Do we want a motion to?
Yeah, we need a motion.
So moved.
To accept. Second?
Second.
All in favor, starting with Matthew?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
So gentlemen, under those circumstances, I'll take these back and secure the Mylar from Whitman and Bingham. Can you stop in the office?
Thank you, Carrie. Yes, so this had nothing to do with the school?
Yeah, the, of the school. Yes.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is, thank you, Carrie. Have a good evening. Planning Board Goals.
You were sent the Planning Board Goals in your packet. And they, all they were this time was just put in the right format for you.
So start, I'm sorry, we always go to Matthew?
Um, curious, the, uh, the FY 2014, uh, final approved, final approval by Planning Board, uh, it's, it's just the Planning Board Mission Goals and Policies. But we started out with Planning Board Mission Goals and Policies, Planning Director's Goals, and Table 5 Goals and Policies.
We're addressing the Planning Board's Mission Goals and Policies as you voted them. And I put them in final format for you.
Okay. So just the Planning Board. I'm not quite sure exactly. I, I asked for a hierarchical chart of, you know, who does what and whose positions are, are where um, for, for town boards and, and governance. This is the Planning Board Missions, Goals and Policies, but it's the department's mission. And everything has Planning Director, Planning Director, Planning Department. Um, most of it doesn't specify board. It specifies something other than board.
May I? Please, Karen?
Yes.
That is only the data that I provide to you. That does not mean that there's any decisive matter. You decide. And I provided the data for you.
Okay. Yeah, chapter, chapter 41 MGL, that, that's a very small paragraph and, and it only starts at section 81(c), where actually the powers of the Planning Board are delineated at section 81(a) and (b). Section 81(c) is not really a whole lot of guts to it, so to speak. But that's fine. I, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. It's just simply regurgitation of the master general law.
Yes. But, and, and so I think what, Matthew, I don't want to speak for you, but I think what you're saying is.
I would like 81(a) and (b).
Right, if we are regurgitating.
Emphasize it, yeah.
Why wouldn't we do A and B?
Right.
Is what he's saying.
He wants 81(b).
A and B.
A and B.
Defined more clearly.
Well.
I would take it right out of the yes.
Well, this, this, this is, this is the only one that doesn't have a section reference. No, actually, the Zoning Act doesn't either, but, um, it's, it's just vague ambiguity, I, I think. I, I think it's, you know, it, it potentially misleading for the, what's designated as Planning Board's rules and regulation, uh, I'm sorry, powers and duties.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, there's a few typos.
Okay.
Ooh.
Damon, did you, because I think Nathan wanted to, so before I go to Nathan.
Yeah, I thought, oh, my understanding was we were going to have more of another workshop session on it. Um, we only had that one kind of basic.
Once it was all typed up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, Toby's not here either to.
Right.
Express him, his ideas.
All right. So, and this isn't really what we talked about. This is yours, correct?
No, this is what you talked about. I just took from, from the minutes of that, that evening. And these were the ones, and if you were going to add any more, you were going, they were going, you're going to do it at another workshop if you wanted to add more. These are all under chapter. These are goals that the Planning Board should be doing under chapter. If you have other book, goals, then you should put them in there.
And then we talk about master planning goals. We, we listed all kinds of things that we wanted to.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where I'm, what I would say about this is, uh, we discussed a lot more specific things we wanted as a board to achieve over the next year. So I don't, I'm fine, you know, I mean, I understand this is MGL and this, these are the kind of things that in general define a high level, the mission of the Planning Board and, and Marion's role. And that's, you know, but I think we need some, we need a specific set of goals for what we as a planning board intend to accomplish this year. Um, specific kind of what our game plan is so that we can look at those on a regular basis. And I, it, it's, you know, maybe, you know, maybe that wasn't clear to Marion, which is fine, but I think we definitely want to work on that going forward.
But we, because we did spend like an hour and a half and came up with specific goals.
Okay, we'll go back to the disc and find that.
Yeah, please, because we, we spent like an hour and a half as a board talking about specifically for 2014, what we were going to work on. You, we were going to type them up and then as, as Damon said, have the workshop and fine tune them, add.
Okay.
Delineate if we needed to. So that's what I think everybody was looking for this evening.
Remember what meeting that was at? Because I have them on file.
Um.
That was the Stanley Cup meeting. Yeah.
What was it?
The Stanley Cup Playoffs, um.
Do you have a date?
It was the, I think, the second meeting after, um, the election. So the second meeting in May is when we, we picked the new board and we did the goals.
Okay. All right. I will, I will, I will find, I have them on file.
Because the, what, what you gave us this evening is kind of what I think you and.
They are the.
You took those out of the.
No, I took them, we took them off the minutes because Marsha takes everything off minutes, uh, off the disc. So she did not take those off the disc. I'll go back and pull the disc and take those off for you.
There was no disc. It was, it was recorded in, in the Ritter.
And I always have the little recorder on in the Ritter.
Right, in the Ritter. It's the little recorder, not a disc, is what he's telling you. But, um, okay, perfect.
So just.
Continue that.
Yeah, we can continue that. I mean, one thing I, I would really, one of the things we talked about, which I think is going to be critical for us to discuss in terms of like how to execute the goals, how to track the goals. There's, we, we cut, you know, the, the master plan, the mission that, that, uh, that Marion's outlined is huge. And even the specific things we, we want to accomplish, I think, cover a number of different areas. And I think one of the important things we started to talk about was sort of a system where we could sort of divide up responsibility for coordinating, like different areas, like somebody take Town Center, somebody take Economic Development, somebody take Agriculture. And I think that might, um, I think we're, I mean, this is just my opinion, we can talk about it. Where I'd like to see us end up is where, um, we got in, in each meeting, we have a sort of a constant running status of what are our goals, what is our progress against our goals? What's, what have we accomplished? What's the next thing we need to do? I think that'll be easier to achieve if, if we have like somebody from the board kind of looking over.
Specific.
Some specific, some specific, you know, kind of umbrellas, like, it doesn't mean they're going to be like the, the dictator of like Town Center or whatever. But it just means they're the one kind of keeping their eye on the ball, making sure as ideas come up about Town Center, they get that on their list. They make sure they're driving the discussions so that we understand as a board, are we all, you know, we can vote on stuff when it comes to vote. We can, you know, either they're facilitating some process where a plan is made or we're help, or we're discussing it to make a plan together. And then if there was a, a plan made with an outside group, then we gotta discuss, review it and approve it, that kind of stuff.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think what Nathan's saying is more of an action list with responsibility than a overarching goals and ideas that we want to accomplish.
Or more of just a go-to person when the topic comes up. They have, you know, be on top of the information.
Yeah, definitely the go-to person. But yeah, I guess, I don't know, I guess maybe it's like, where's, like, I, I think of it as goals. It's like, what's your, what's our plan and what we really want to get done this year so that we can kind of try to like, so that, so that we can try to execute against that plan kind of thing. Yeah.
Well, because we want to start moving our goals. It's great to have our goals on piece of paper. We want to start moving them. We want to start making things happen. And we want to start moving the Town Center. We want to start whatever these goals are that we sit here in 2013 and be able to say, okay, we accomplished A, B, and C.
And that'll be the difference between us being a reactive board and a proactive board.
And, and as I was going to say, under committee reports, we might want to have a, a little bullet of 2013 goals, status updates.
Yes, that's a great idea.
So on the agenda, just like you updated us on the school, now you're, you've got hypothetical, the center. And MRPC John Hume gave the presentation, talked with John, gave him some feedback, like to see more function on the center, not just statistics. Talked with John, that type of thing.
That type of thing, yep, exactly.
All right. And hopefully we'll, um, at.
We'll fix that.
The next meeting, which is on September 23rd, it's at 6:30. Does anybody, um, I'm sorry. Right, September 23rd, 6:30 at the Ritter. Does anybody, I know Nathan, do you have conflict if we met at like 5:30, 6:00 and did an hour, half hour workshop on the goals and then went into the meeting?
No, that should be fine.
You know.
5:30, no.
Sure, I can manage it.
Five-thirty on the twenty-third, and we could spend an hour on the goals, and then go into the planning meeting? Okay, how's that work? That way we could get those done and start to produce on them.
At this point, then, Ms. Chair, Ms. Chair, we had questions from Mr. Hume's presentation.
Yeah.
And I took those questions from that disk and sent them to Mr. Hume, and he has sent back the packets, which he is answering these questions.
Yeah, when we get down to your development review?
Things, yeah.
It's there, we'll hit it?
Yeah.
Yep, perfect. All right, so I think we're all set with Planning Board goals. We're going to, on September twenty-third, meet at five-thirty. You will have typed up all the goals that we listed and talked about back in May, all ready to go, and then we'll tweak those, we'll put some ownership to them and be able to move forward.
Okay. Now, did you give me the date again, please?
It's September twenty-third, our next meeting, and we're going to meet at five-thirty.
Okay, got it.
Okay, perfect. Six, Planning Directors' report new business, three hundred, West Holman and three hundred, Holman Street, Sandra Lane trustee, master general law, Chapter Sixty-One B, right of first refusal.
That has not happened yet. We've only had a recursor area, and I sent you the map of the piece of property that is discussing. They have not come and asked to come out of chapter, but that is that piece of property is on the market as of now. They have asked to speak with the Conservation Commission, and they have asked to speak with the Land Use Committee, but it is not, and it has not been an official application, it's just that they, Mrs. Lane's trustees and attorneys is now placing it on the market. And I sent you the sixty-one B thing in your packet. You want to see mine, Joanna?
No, I'm good. Any questions?
Yeah, what is the asking price?
I don't think we have the, I did have it, but I don't think I have it with me here.
Right here, two-twenty-two, current year. Oh, those are assessments.
Yes.
Market and land value, just on the assessment, says five-eighty-nine.
But see, that is not really, you know, something that we can hang our hats on.
Yeah, no, I'm just reading.
Yeah, no, that's good. There's two parcels there, each side of the road, there's one for two-hundred-and-eight.
Well, that's been a question that we haven't defined. They've listed it as three hundred acres, but then they say there's three hundred and fifty-some acres.
They have two different Board of Assessors.
Yeah.
They have three hundred, West Holman Street with a hundred acres for-
And then-
For, only one of us can talk, for five-eighty-nine, and then they have two hundred and eight acres on just Holman Street for market and land value, one million point two.
So, we're looking at one point seven for the total parcel?
Yeah.
Interesting. Okay.
Ken! Oh, no! Anything I have is yours, Nathan.
Thanks, Joanna.
Incidentally, there are also high-tension lines on that two-oh-eight parcel.
Oh, is there? Okay. All right, so any other questions on that?
Do you know, just like, where is this relative to Chase Road? Oh, there's Chase, okay, I got you, Chase Holman, got it. Okay.
Because Holman, the end of Holman, they closed down with the little bridge, was it, got washed out?
Yep, yep.
And that road from Townsend Way is closed.
So, where's the bridge roughly?
Right in the middle of it, isn't it?
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. And it's, this is the combined two parcels?
Yes, I would think so.
Okay.
One's one hundred and one's two-oh-eight.
That's Holman, and this is-
Northfield?
Northfield, yeah, 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 yeah. Thanks, sorry about that.
Oh, no, not at all. I told you, anything I've got, take it. All right.
I also believe that that abuts the existing DPW, does it not?
Oh, goodness. Stop. And I was laughing at you.
I didn't hear what you-
He was asking if the parcel abuts the existing Department of Public Works building, their property, I believe it does.
I don't know, I'd have to look at the map.
Okay.
Look at it.
Sure. Yeah, enough curiosity about the first right of refusal. How long do we have to deliberate on that?
I think we have a hundred and twenty days, but they have not applied.
Okay.
So, it's non-existent at this point.
Yeah, it's a hundred, I think a hundred and twenty days from when they make the-
Application.
Application to the town.
So, just a reminder, that's only six Planning Board meetings to decide.
Yeah. Well, and what'll happen is-
At best.
Again, as he said, proactively, they're just giving us a head up, they're looking to do this. You know the Board of Selectmen's going to come to the Planning Board and the Conservation, so we need to start, you might want to drive by, look at it, and put it on the agenda for September twenty-third, to just have thoughts and ideas on our recommendation to the town.
Right.
That'd be very interesting, what the Conservation Commission has to say. It's a low-lying area, there's a lot of water down there.
Right.
And I'm sure it feeds Hickory Hills, too.
Yeah.
Huh.
The Molpus. Okay. Do you know if it feeds Molpus Brook?
It goes to the headwaters, I understand, from the Conservation Commission.
Okay, perfect.
As of concern. It's also the only entrance to the Big Forest, Lunenburg Big-
The Big Forest, okay. All right, so we'll put that on the agenda for the twenty-third, Marion, to just kind of have thoughts and ideas, everybody can go look at it. Public document access via the Internet.
Okay.
And this was the-
I put that in your packet.
Yep.
Which our IT person recommended, and he asked for feedback, and I got feedback from Joanna and from everybody but Toby. And it might be because we just found, remember, Toby's son is getting married somewhere along in this particular time period. So, if you want to, I gave copies to all of you, so if you want to discuss, so that I can relate back to the IT man.
We're going to start with me again?
Yeah.
All right, perfect. Yeah, no, that's an IT issue, I think they should deal with it. I really, the only, the only reason it was brought up at Board was because we need documentation. I really don't care what they do with the public access.
Nathan, or, I'm sorry, Damon?
Yeah, I like the plan. The only thing I had a problem with was the requiring username and password to access it, because they are public documents. I understand username and password for you to add files, but if for a read-only format, there's no reason why the whole town shouldn't have access to it.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think I provided similar feedback by email.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to document the document, but they should be able to view it, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah. No, please, come on up.
I can't be at a meeting and not interrupt. I just wanted to mention, the username and password, that was something we thought you wanted, so that's why it was included. If you don't want it, there's no reason it has to be there. I think when it, when it came to me, when Mary and Steve and I sat down and we talked about it, we thought that was a request from the Planning Board.
Yeah, no, they just wanted to make sure that it was, nobody could alter the plan, that it was a read-only file that you couldn't-
Right, so there's no issue on our part in not having username and password.
But also on that point is that it might be beneficial, because there are certain documents that are distributed to the Board members that aren't necessarily public, or are those only in the executive sessions?
Only in executive.
Okay.
Once it comes in front of us, it becomes a public document.
Sure.
Okay. So, I think we could start to move forward, and always, we might find things to enhance as we go and learn from that, but we could start to get those online under the Planning Board on the website.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, Carrie, thank you, Marion.
I will get back to Steve on this.
Okay, and just make sure he understands we don't need the user ID, it's just a read-only file. Great.
I got one thing I'd like to add, now that we've got a selectman and a town manager. I think that this Planning Board should have a projector and a screen for the presenter as well, live chat online for public input during meetings, one set of tablet PCs to be used by all Board members at public meetings, preloaded with specific documentation for such meeting. Just, I mean, shuffling of papers and being unclear of, you know, was it this parcel, was it that one, was there a road there? I think it would expedite and improve our capacities, our abilities. I mean, if you think about five hundred dollars for a tablet PC, and there's, there's no more than seven member boards in town, that's thirty-five hundred dollars. It's a little bite, but I think for efficiency, it would be quite well worth it.
Okay, well, we have the projector and screen, so cross that one off your list, we got that.
PowerPoint?
That's PowerPoint, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So, look at that, we already crossed one off.
Excellent.
We're flying! All right, number two was?
That was actually twelve, but I don't really want to get into it, I just wanted to bring it up.
Okay, the tablet, you're-
I think the tablets would be excellent, because they would give us an opportunity for a decent-sized plan, and if it was, if it was taken care of by a, we've got a videographer, so we could have a data disk jockey, so to speak, who could synchronize what we were seeing on our plans, on our tablets. So, the current discussion would be right there, available for us, we wouldn't have to look over and wonder if we've got that, or-
So, are you requesting all of us have a tablet, or just the Planning Board have one?
I was thinking for the town in general, for every single board, for every meeting.
One tablet, or a tablet for all members?
One for each member.
Oh, yeah, that's a lot.
Okay, that's fine.
I was thinking maybe for Marion, as the director.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, no, and I like your suggestions, Matthew.
Very good, thank you.
Well, just, yeah, just to take that, so a couple of things, like, I don't know, if folks have laptops or tablets, like, I bring mine sometimes, look at the maps or whatever. One thing, if I just, like, if you have one, I mean, we could bring them and access whatever, I mean, I don't know that the town has to provide them for it to be a useful idea. I wouldn't, one thing I'd be useful is if I could get access, I don't know the password for, and obviously we don't want to say it on the air or whatever, for the town halls, Wi-Fi. I have a thought, too, I mean, they're starting to come out with these big surface things that, I don't know if they're quite there yet to the point that we could really use them, but at some point, I think that might be really cool. Not just cool, but help us do our job in terms of understanding maps, because like, like, the maps we get are good, but sometime, you know, being able to, they have basically tablets that are about this big, and just having one for this room that could connect to the projector might-
Sure.
-might add a lot of, you know, value. We might have to huddle around a little bit, but I think between, I think, you know, probably each of us owns some kind of portable computing device, I could be wrong, I mean, does anyone in this-
I would feel silly pulling out my laptop, though.
Why?
Well, I mean, I don't know, I guess, good question, why?
Because Barbara, the, she does the minutes right there on her laptop during the meetings.
Okay.
So, but the Wi-Fi, because I know you go to a hotel, they all have like a universal generic, is that something that we could set up and maybe have here?
They have, they have a Wi-Fi, just we need the access code, yeah, exactly.
But like the Marriott, they all have like a generic passcode that the guests use, and-
Right, I guess so.
So, could we talk to Steve? Well, I don't know if that one's like a confidential one, and you want to get-
No, it's not. We have, we have Wi-Fi here at Town Hall, and the password is redcoats. And it's not a secret. Redcoats.
Excellent, thank you, great. What am I going to write down?
I, look at how quick I am taking these agenda items off.
Keep an eye out.
Challenges.
Tomorrow, there's going to be forty people sitting on the steps at Town Hall.
It's the new Starbucks.
Madam Chair, and may I ask you, Mrs. Fidel, a question?
Yes.
Wasn't the issue of tablets for the Board of Selectmen brought up, in that it was not carried through for reasons, and Paula's shaking her head up in that, for reasons of finances?
The Board, there was, one of the Board members made a request to look into that, I think it was probably two years ago, and so we did, and the information was brought back on the cost versus, the cost of, it really was in terms of the cost of putting together a paper packet versus an electronic packet, which is different, you know, the Board of Selectmen don't typically look at plans like you do, so it is a different application. But they decided at the time that they didn't see a cost benefit of doing that. That doesn't mean we couldn't look at it again or for a different application, you know, it might make sense, I know a lot of communities are, and certainly making more use of, you know, presentations here.
Right. Well, and that's what I was going to say, is like Nathan's comment, is you buy the universal one for here, for all boards, for all committees to be able to utilize, that we would be able to put the plans up and show, once they're PDF, we'd be able to get those, show them, and put them on the screen, so you have the bigger of your hand.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And as far as these packets go, I mean, if they're public, I mean, there's no reason why, the same thing that Carrie's worked out with IT for us, like, you know, if we were sitting here with our, each with our own little favorite device, if Marion publishes her weekly packet to that website, we can all just click on the same link and-
And nobody's mailing packets anymore.
We're all connected to those redcoats, and we're all cool, yeah.
And we would eliminate the packets that I send out every Thursday.
Yeah, they'd be scanned into where-
Okay, I'll talk with Steve.
Talk to Steve, perfect. Okay, thank you for that feedback.
Yes, thank you.
All right, MRPC, master planning status.
Well, again, when Mr. Hume was here and made his presentation, there were several questions that this Board asked, so I pulled them from, you know, as you know, we do the minutes from the disk. And I sent it to him, and I asked him if he would answer those questions for you, and there, I have packets. There is an interesting one, Nathan, or no, Damon, on the reuse report. He sent me one from the, from Westminster, so I put an extra one in here, so you can take it to your meeting if you so wish.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is all of the questions and other information, such as that, and then he gave me, sent me some smart growth village overlay districts, which I included in here of a few communities. And this didn't come in until this morning, so I had no way to get it to you-
That's fine.
-prior. Give Nathan, or Damon two.
Damon gets two, those are his two.
Thank you.
Are we going through these, or just you want us to read them on our own time?
Well, I thought you wanted to have the answers, so it's up to you, Ms. Chair, whether you want to go through them right now or not. They're interesting, there were several of them that, for the tax rate comparison to other towns is interesting, for example, but they were all good questions, and Mr. Hume acknowledged that they were good questions, so I asked him.
I just, you know, it's just tough to look at two thousand senses, that all this information's coming from two thousand.
See, we didn't, we didn't get the other information yet, that's a problem. So, if you want to do them on your own and come back for the next meeting, I'm perfectly willing to put them on the agenda again.
Think it'd be more timely to go through it ourselves and have a little discussion.
All right.
Perfect, thank you, Marion.
So, I will say that you will go to the next agenda with these.
Frost Corp.
Okay.
Frost Corp is over the old Frost Building, that's Dora Powell's, on Lemons to Shirley Road, just so you know where we are.
You, the-
Frost Auto, yeah, the brown building that was-
Yeah.
What I sent you in your packet was his application, however, he does not have all of the plans in front of me, because his engineer is not working rapidly enough for him. But this came out of the Lunenburg zoning Board of Appeals, excuse me, they gave him But this came out of the Lunenburg zoning Board of Appeals, excuse me, they gave him a special permit for the use, and then they turned it over to us because there is a new building that's going to go up. Now, there's some work being done down there. In fact, Joanna asked me about it, and I sent Mike down, our zoning officer, and they are doing what is being allowed for them to do by the zoning Board of Appeals, but we need to do a development plan review on the new part of their, it's going to be quite extensive. They're redoing a building and so forth, but they're also going to be building a large building, which does trigger the development plan review. But I'm just warning you that the plans will come in and we'll start that review, but it is, I felt sorry for the gentleman because I know what, when they're all set to go and they're waiting for the engineer to get the work done and out to them. Okay, but I wanted you to be aware of this. Any questions, Joanna?
How does that involve the board? Just the plan review?
The new building.
Just, just for the development?
The site for the new building and the building. Of course, the building itself will be under the zoning, under the building official and the electric, our electric man and so forth, but the development plan review, which is 8.4 in your book.
Because the petitioner right here is seeking a special permit with the zoning Board of Appeals to revent, renovate the existing building to use as a retail showroom. They're also constructing a new warehouse, 60 by 124, and renovating the parking area. So, the development plan review would fall on the new warehouse, the 60 by 124 building.
And the, as far as they're concerned, the development, the zoning Board of Appeals will give that report to them through Mike, is how it goes. They can add to it if they wish, but they have given them the special permit for the use.
Okay, Ryan and Amy Lazaro, 617 Lemonster Road.
Again, they are looking for a driveway permit, and what they are is they're on a scenic road, so we have to hold a scenic road.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. And I sent you in your packet the general laws on that, and they're, again, they're not quite ready with their, their plan. But this is kind of a funny way, it curve, they curve into each other, so they really need to be looked at, and mostly that they're looked at under the scenic road for the stone walls and the trees. Okay? So, as soon as that comes in, we'll set a date for a public hearing for that. Okay?
Where is this on Lemonster Road, Marion? Do you know?
I have not been down there. Mike went down and took a look. I could go down on site tomorrow if you wish.
It's near Page Street.
It's near Kilburn.
Yes.
I think it's, you know, there's that, like, brown wooden house that's like, kind of down, goes downhill. It's probably near there.
Well, yeah, because when you come around the shop corner, there's a driveway and there's a white house that you can, you go in the driveway and pull into their house, and there's a yellow house behind it.
Uh...
That's a sheer driveway.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what that was.
Right, yeah, I'll have to look.
If you look at the map, it shows you it a little bit better, and see how it comes up and goes over, and that's why they want to have a separate entrances.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think it was right before Cherry Hill.
Right before Cherry Hill, Kilburn, yeah.
Yes.
All right, the citizen survey update.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Matthew. I apologize.
It's okay. They're going to be required to submit plans for that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Marion sent him a letter saying it does need to come in front of us because it's a scenic road, showing existing walls and so forth.
Sure.
They've been notified.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Damon. I skipped right over questions. I'm sorry. Do you have any?
Nope.
Nathan?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Look at you with your tablet now that you got the passcode.
Yeah.
You're going to town. All right. The citizen survey update.
The citizen survey is now completed. Where am I with it? And I am working with the IT man. We're going to have Survey Monkey aboard. I know you'd like that, Nathan. And the, we're also, we'll put them in, we've got it ready to go into the town hall, the Ritter, the library, in case people want to do it that way, but they will be able to respond online, and Survey Monkey will be able to collate that much, and then we can feed the other one. I am going to do some seminars over at the Eagle House. I worked out with Dorine, and I'm going to meet with them tomorrow, and then I'm going to sit with the seniors. They, they need to be heard in there. This is one of the ways that we can do that. Okay? But to have Survey Monkey now put aboard for us is, I think, an improvement. It's a step ahead.
Yeah, now, what's the plan for getting out the link to the Survey Monkey survey?
Well, we'll do that, Steve is going to do that. We'll do it through, through our town and, and website and our planning website.
Gotcha.
Okay? I think that should be sufficient, don't you?
Um, I don't know. I don't know how many people visit those sites, so...
Well, and I want, I want to ask if we can do, because the town has the universal call that says there's a survey.
Oh, well.
Available. Go on the website, the town website, and take the survey. I also want, you know, they have the universal call there. I wanted to see if we could do that, and then I wanted to see if we could use the fire department signboard that says the, the planning board survey. Please go on website and complete the survey.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I have had discussions with the chief, the fire chief, and he does not want to put anything on those calls unless they are emergencies and things of that sort. He feels that if they're used just for information, and you can confirm this with him, if they're used just for passing of information, then people will stop paying attention when it is an important issue. So, we had asked him to do a couple of things previously, and he said, no, he would rather not do those. We have a new signboard, if you notice, right in front of the library that was donated in memory of a past citizen, and so we can put a sign up on that. Would that be...
Can we coordinate with the ledger and get them, because I know...
Yes.
If you like the ledger on Facebook, then you get, they put links sometimes to certain articles, but if they could put a link to our survey, can we coordinate that?
That was one of our plans, was to put it ahead of time, and even in the little blurb in the sunder.
Well, not just in the paper, but on their Facebook feed, because they do have their articles on there sometimes.
Okay, you want it on, on Facebook.
Yeah, because it's an online survey. If we can link people directly to that.
That's a great idea.
The town of Lunenburg is also on Facebook, right?
Yes.
And they make, they make comments. They, they publicize stuff, so that would be a good, another avenue.
Is the town actually operating that? Who operates?
I don't know. I'll ask Steve.
Facebook page.
That's a good question.
I will ask Steve about that.
Because that would be a good outlook, but I don't know.
I would be very willing to double check with the chief again.
No, you don't need to.
Okay.
I'm fine.
All right. So, you have a copy of that.
Of course, I have some comments on the questionnaire.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, this, this is very blocky and not much fun to read.
What are we talking about?
The survey.
Oh.
I mean, you s-
I thought we approved the survey, did we not?
No.
Okay.
I thought we were discussing it.
I didn't know we were going to make other changes to it.
Go ahead, Matthew. What's your feedback?
Well, I mean, it, it's not, it's not approachable by the citizen. I mean, they, they read this stuff and they're like, oh, great, wonderful. You know, I, it does, it's not enticing. It's not inviting to me as a person of the town, saying, oh, great, wonderful, you guys are putting together new rules. I should, I would think it would be a little bit more inviting and a little bit friendly, you know, encouraging people, you know, we, we need your input, our town, we, we're making decisions for you people, we need your input.
And to Matthew's point, there's also questions, I noticed, where it's asking about CPA or scenic road acts, and gives no real explanation to what that is, and the layperson might not know the implications of, oh, do you, are you in favor of a CPA? They might not, a lot of people probably don't know what that is.
You want a little more explanation in that?
Maybe.
This is what I thought, ready to go, because we were going to be ready to go out with it, but I'd be glad to add something more to that.
It does...
This, this is a, taken from several other communities. This is not something that I set and created. I went researching other communities, and this is the type of survey they put out for the beginning of, of master planning changes. So, that particular one that you're speaking of, Damon, what number was that?
I don't have it in front of me.
24.
24.
Could we possibly go over this at the next meeting?
It's supposed to go out before that.
When's it going out?
It's supposed to go out next week.
And when did we have a discussion on it?
We did have, I had it before you twice. And I also asked for any, okay, I see what you're saying. Somebody might not know what the Community Preservation Act is, so I could put a sentence of explanation.
That's just one example of what I remember from looking at it. Again, it's not in front of me, but there might be a couple others if you go through it, specific references that might need some more explanation.
If I could have that almost immediately, because I have a meeting with them tomorrow.
So, what, what did your thoughts, Matthew? Did you have thoughts in the opening paragraph?
Well, I mean, planning board doesn't need to say that, you know, it says board, board, board. Specifically for fiscal year 2014 would be nice. Citizen survey for, for the Lunenburg period to be used to provide guidance and direction for town of, boards, committees, departments, and master planning. I mean...
It says that it will be followed with public forums. Like I said, Matthew, this was taken from several other communities who has already done this. It was suggested by MRPC, and they looked at it, and they asked, asked for a couple more things to go in it.
Matthew just has some things he would like to see different.
Okay.
And also, I asked the question, how many times have we discussed this at board meeting?
I had it before you, a couple, more than a couple of times.
Right, but we have not discussed it.
We discussed it once. I know we discussed it once because we added, we discussed it with, actually, when John Hume was here.
Right.
Because I asked that we add 23, the workforce component.
Right.
To get the workforce data, because we haven't had that since 2000 in the last sentence.
That's right.
So, I had asked, because that was one of Nathan's questions, was that if we could get more updated data on the workforce in Lunenburg?
And we also added...
But I know that, but I, I think it was in front of us that evening with John Hume.
No, I had it on before that, too. I, the demographics here is, they felt, people felt, and MRPC felt was very important, so we added that to it.
Mm-hmm.
And they also suggested that we add the transportation element to it.
Maybe they should put that on their, on their questionnaire for their region.
Pardon me?
Maybe they could put that on their regional questionnaire.
No, they wanted to, what they're doing is going through a format for us under the economic development. That's the element that they're working on, and they always start out with a survey of questions. We can always go back in, in our public forums, which we'll have, and ask more questions and have more material, but I'm asking, I guess, at this point, that I understand the one sentence that Damon is, is speaking of, but I would really like to go forward where it is all planned with at least this much of the survey, and then we could start a more personal one, if you would like, when we start doing the public formats.
Okay. One, one last question would be on the Survey Monkey. Will there be availability for free writing?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, I asked that with Steve today.
And, and over here on Survey Monkey, I see you have a little parentheses, we'll need to specify. I think it should be on the town website, the planning page. It should be able to go, because we want as many people to go to Survey Monkey than, as we can get, only because they tally it for you, and we don't have to manually tally.
That's right. That's what he said.
Yeah.
So, that, that will be specified.
Yeah. So, I would say have Survey Monkey on the town's homepage, on your home, on the planning board page, as Damon said, on the Facebook link, through the ledger, that they're all going to Survey Monkey, because it's just less manpower we have to.
And then we, if those, we leave them at the different drop boxes we can slide in that, that data.
Okay.
I think we did well to get Survey Monkey.
No, I think that's a really nice step, and I appreciate, I think, congratulations on getting that, that ball moved forward. Thanks, Mary.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Nathan, we left off it. Damon?
Oh, sorry.
No, we're, enough of that.
No, he was done. It was your turn.
Um, no, I, I don't have any other things right now.
Okay. Thank you all for your feedback on that. Whitetail Crossing, Burridge Street, ASBIL status?
The status of that has been at a standstill because of an engineering situation, and I have talked with the, it's down to one partner now, so they have, it had been reviewed by a third-party reviewer, and so he has got another on the ASBIL, and so he is having that, those questions answered, and that plan adjusted will be in to me, he said, by next week. His, his purpose in this is to, and this is the report from Ross on, on the project that I sent along with you, his purpose is he wants to go to the town meeting that we have in the fall to get his road accepted, so that he doesn't have to plow all winter, of course, you know, so it should be finished up within the next month, so that he can go aboard to the Board of Selectmen. This is a very old project.
Yeah.
Do you have questions?
Questions, yes.
Okay. We'll start with Nathan first and go this way. How's that?
There you go.
There you go. Go ahead, Nathan.
My question is, is this dealing with the, sort of the entirety of the roadway inside of the Whitetail Crossing?
Yes, it's, it's the ASBIL plan.
Microphone, sorry.
Okay, so just to repeat, I was just asking if this, this item that's going to come before the town is the entirety of the roadway inside of Whitetail Crossing, and just, do we have any sense at this point, his, his Department of Public Works reviewed it, and do they have an opinion on it?
Yes, he's been active with it.
Does, is he have an, an opinion so far?
On the ASBIL?
Yes.
Yes, no. What is going to be done, the order that it'll be done is David Ross Associates' third-party review will be answered.
Okay.
Okay? And then, as that's worked out, Jack comes in, too, with that.
Okay. Okay, so, there, see, that's, that's in the process, coming up.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mary.
So, we hope to have that finished within a month, so that they'll be ready to go to the Board of Selectmen.
I have questions.
Yeah, it's, Damon?
You're next, no?
Go ahead.
Um, I was reviewing the regulations, and Regulation 5.9.2 and subdivision rules and regulations states that all boundaries on the road shall be granite or concrete, not pins.
Yes, it does say that in that rules and regulations. However, as matter of policy, they don't do all of them. They go in a certain amount of them, and you will see later that I have a recommendation that I'm bringing before you, just to start warning you people that we need to redo those rules and regulations. They need to be brought up to date.
When you say "you people," is that us?
I'm sorry. Was that a bad way to do it? My, it's the planning board. I'm trying to make the planning board aware that we have a couple of documents that really need updating. They're going to cost money to do it, but we do need to get them updated.
Okay.
And that is one of the places, Matthew, that we need to update.
Excellent. So, I'll clarify, did you say that we have a policy of ignoring our rules and regulations?
No.
No.
No, I did not indicate that. I indicated that there is times when the granite doesn't go all the way, and that is involved with the, the DPW and so forth. So, we do follow those regulations pretty strictly, and we are, our reviewing engineers are aware of that.
But the review...
So, are they asking for a waiver on this rule for this?
They did ask for a waiver before.
And we already approved a waiver?
Oh, okay. My bad.
Yes.
Very good. Also, my, my copy of the rules and regulations is dated March 2002.
Down below that is the last time it was, right down...
There's nothing below it.
Well, it should be.
And every page says 2002.
Well...
And, and on that, Matthew, we had a conversation, the agricultural commission, do they get a copy of those books, Marion?
They can have a copy of those books, yes.
Yeah, because as a committee, they, they were sworn in and received no literature, no books, nothing to add to them.
Well, I'd be very happy to provide it for them.
So, if we could make sure that those committee members...
Thank you.
They got the...
For reminding me. For reminding me.
If those committee members can at least have that reading material of the rules and regulations, and have them be successful.
They came under the...
Updated ones, please.
If, if I may, the Conservation Commission gave them their rules and regulations, but there's no problem in giving them these.
Perfect. Just so they have the tools to be successful.
And could I also get some updated rules and regulations for subdivision? Mine are 11 years old.
Well, I told you that we're going to have to update them. I don't have my last copy with me, but I thought further than what your copy says. I'll check it tomorrow and be sure that you have the latest.
Well, I'm sure they've changed, because they've changed in relation to the lawsuit, the...
Forty-eighty.
So they've been changed since 2002.
But they need to be updated.
Yeah, so you'll get that to Matthew.
Yeah.
So his book's updated. Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Anything else on that before we move?
Ooh, maybe.
Whitetail Crossing, you got more?
The Mylar should be approved by a PE and a PLS, not or, I believe.
Where are you at?
Eleven, the review, as-built road plan. I suppose it doesn't...
Should be on Mylar stamped, signed, and dated by a PLS or PE?
I believe the road plans are supposed to be stamped by both. I'm not sure, so that would be a good thing to check on.
Would you please show me where it was?
Yeah, he's right here, on number 11.
Number 11, as-built plan.
The final as-built plan should be on a Mylar stamped, signed, and dated by a PLS, and he believes "and" a PE, so he just wanted you to check on that. Did I state that correctly?
I believe you did. Thank you.
And a, instead of say or.
Or, he believes it should be signed by both.
Okay.
So he just wanted you to make sure, so we didn't have it incorrect on the end.
All right.
All right. Anything else?
This letter is dated March 12 of this year, and it says they will submit a follow-up report on the field conditions. Has that been submitted?
As I said previously, Matthew, there was a problem with an engineer, and so this was put on hold until they could straighten out, and so it probably will have to be done again at that point.
So yes or no, it has or has not been submitted?
No, it has not.
Okay. Thank you.
Stone Farm.
Yeah, I was just meaning the pin thing. Hold on, I just got to make a note for myself.
Sure.
Don't you be rushing me. All right. Next, we have, that was Whitetail. Stone Farm Estates, no report. High Field Vision, we already did. New England Farms, I don't know if anybody drives over there. That thing's coming up beautifully.
It is.
They roofed it today.
And I sent you a copy of the report, which did not come in today, but Mike has been gone, our zoning officer, has been down there, and he's very pleased with the...
Now, Marion, do we know Duncan Donuts is the coffee provider? Do we know who the gas is? People have asked me that, and I...
I don't know, because he changes from place to place, but I can ask him now. He might have...
Yeah, if he signed the vendor, and if there's food served, just what that vendor would be, so we look educated as to who's going in there.
Okay, the vendors.
Perfect. But yeah, they're going right along with that.
They're not willing to give that information until they get things sewed up, as you know.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So this is the Pioneer Park?
Yes, the corner, the gas station at Pioneer Park.
So there's a, there's a, there's a approximate location of high-pressure Tennessee gas line.
Yep.
Right below the gas station?
Yeah, they've been working with Tennessee, that's what the holdup was.
Natural gas and gasoline?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the environmental, everybody was involved in that.
Sounds good. There's a good number of...
Actually, they had to change the plan, Matthew, because of the gas line.
Yeah, we formatted, we formatted the plan.
There's a good number of errors or differences and disagreements within these plans that I went through and noticed. Too late now, we built it. Oh, okay. Fabulous.
Emerald Place at Lake Whalen, the interior roads, quickly, the, in your packet, the Lunenburg sent notification, the building official sent us notification that due to the modification of the projects that have been made, the street, some of the street numbers changed. So they changed the, just the numbers, so one lakefront Ave will now become 49 Carousel Lane, which I'm assuming where the villa is on the waterfront. Remember, they moved them and back into the, so these are the new numbers with the building permit associated with them.
Gotcha.
That's all. That was just a record-keeping matter.
And also at Emerald Place, we talked about the crossroads.
Yes.
And there is already one on the plan, and they are willing to put another one...
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks. What did I say?
Crossroads.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I knew what you meant.
They are willing to put one more on them, and I think that I would rather use this plan to show, and they will be before us. Right now, they're very active over at Fort Devens with what they call Hollywood East, so they're going to come before us on the water, and they will go over at least to own a very...
So where are the crosswalks going?
Okay, now, let's see. There is, this is the lakefront. That's one crossroad, and when you get up here to here, they are, they're going to design a crosswalk, a crosswalk, thank you, to the beach area. Okay? But they do not feel that they're responsible for these roads out here.
Right, so you mean from the, where lakefront intersects the rotary?
Yes.
So they've got one here.
Yes, and they're willing to put in another one.
Well, yeah, they should definitely, if they're providing access to their residents, they definitely need to go to the...
This is not a definite design. This is just poke the finger at it, because they will do a design.
So here's the rotary, so this is the lakefront, so they're going to put one here, going from the project to the waterfront, and then there's one here.
Well, they've already got one there, one there, one there, and they should have one there, and because of the ADA, they should have a receiving for that one on that side.
Well, when they come before us, you can request that, or you can put it in writing, but they told me they did not feel that was their obligation.
Okay.
They felt that their obligation was to go across the lakefront and to go across here, and that was as far as, you know, and remember, this was approved plan, and we didn't ask for more than the one at the time.
Is this the sidewalk you end?
Yeah, right here. This is the sidewalk.
Four-foot, two-minute's concrete walk.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, well, and I think part of that was, you know, we might have not had crosswalk section talk at the time, because we didn't realize the beach thing was a whole new concept.
Yeah.
When, once they started building, saw what they had, and saw how utilized it is by the residents, that's why we're now looking at the crosswalks.
Yeah, well, they're willing to do the second crosswalk.
So is this, this is grass walkway?
Yeah.
And that's the grass one that goes down, all the way down the side.
Yeah, because the mailboxes are right here.
That might be asphalt. I don't know if I've seen that. This is this part here.
Yeah. Damon, are you good? You want it down there?
Just to comment on that, the ADA requirements are something that should have been changed by the review engineer.
Yeah, and we could check with Jesse. I don't, who's the review engineer for ammo?
It's right now, it's Jesse.
Yeah. Trittown Landing, Youngs Road.
What we're working on, and been working on with them, at the Youngs Road, is this, because it's a 40R, there are a whole lot of other things that have to be done, and I have to make a yearly report, and plus, I have to make sure that they are aware of all our occupancies for the buildings as we build them, and we have the occupancy built for Building Three. The project, of course, is not done, because there's four, five, and six, and I have no knowledge of who's, who or what's going to go forward from there. In this search of, I responded to the state and everything that they needed for that, except for the 40S. I did get the family count, the student count through the schools, but then there is a part of the criteria that has to be done by the board of, the assessor for the town of Lunenburg. Harold, so I went to Harold with it, of course, and Harold really found it extremely difficult. Harold is a very smart assessor, because it's so convoluted. So he's worked directly with Lisa, and I can't pronounce her last name, as I have. The last word that he has heard from her is through all the gyrations that she goes through with the taxes, how much was this, and what we had next size, and on so forth, is that we still do not qualify for 40S this year. We didn't last year, and we didn't the year before. We have asked, he has asked, and I have asked for her to put that in writing. So far, we have not got it in writing. Harold and I talked on Thursday, and we're both going to send another letter to her, asking her to put it in writing. It's very difficult to work with this particular group.
Asian Imperial?
Asian Imperial, they replaced the chain, and they put reflectors on it.
Okay. Any questions?
Comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Something that hasn't come up in the many discussions we've had that really, that's Mass Highway right-of-way? That property is actually owned by Mass Highway?
Yes.
No, not that particular. There is a section down there that is owned by Mass Highway.
Two A?
And they wanted to, what they wanted to do...
He's on Asian Imperial.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay. I didn't know if he was still on Trittown. Okay. Go ahead.
Their representative went to the state to ask them about what property was owned by the state and what wasn't, and could they utilize that property, that it was in the line there, owned by the state? And the state said absolutely not, because they would not assume the liability.
Right.
So therefore, they said, no, there could be no parking, could be nothing, but they definitely can cross, close that off. So they're, the special permit given by the Zoning Board of Appeals says the gate. Now, they feel that that is adequate for the gate. I have worked and worked and worked to try to get, but the fire chief does not want a wooden gate, because he said it was coming up from the, from the...
Right, he told us that.
Okay, you know that's already, you don't need to repeat it. So they've been working with the chain. Well, a couple of things happened. A truck drove in there and couldn't get out, so they had to take the chain down to let them out, and so on and so forth, so they've replaced it all, and they put reflectors on it, and there's a lot of signs that say, "Do not enter." That's where it's at.
I've actually driven by and seen it.
Pardon?
I've actually driven by and seen it, but I'm looking at a plan that you sent me, and the gate is well, it's within the Mass Highway right-of-way. It's on, it's on Mass Highway property.
According to them, it's not, but I'll double-check it. They, their representative had been working, as I said, with the state. You think that that gate is on state property?
It clearly shows it on state property, and it clearly states locked gate with lockbox.
That is what they asked for, and they, fire chief overruled that, because he does not want to have to stop the engine and get someone out to undo the gate, the lockbox and so forth. This particular gate, as they call it, he can go right through it.
Yes, okay. But honestly, I have no understanding of the validity of this document, because it's only a partial plan, and it's Plan Four of Seven, and it's the only thing I received.
It's the only thing that I have on that gate.
Oh. All right. Well, I really don't think it's a planning issue.
Yeah, no, it's not. It's the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I don't think the Zoning Board of Appeals can override the safety factor that...
That, it's not, it's not our issue.
I worked with the Development Plan Review, I've done everything I can do.
Right. Well, if it's on state land, that might be, you know, in our jurisdiction, but, at a player review engineering, but the gate, the lockbox, all of that, that's out of our, that's the Zoning Board of Appeals. And by, we could go public comment to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a private citizen and say, "Our thought process..." I gotta put my peeps.
That's the right-of-way, right? The right-of-way for the highway. There is a gate.
Where's the gate up here?
I believe that's one of the posts, that arrow points to the locked gate.
Right here?
Yep.
May I have a copy of that? Make a copy of it.
That's what you sent me, Ms. Benson.
Okay, I would, I don't have, let me see that in place.
And he's saying, this is the road, that's the gate right there, and this is the state road.
Okay. Matthew, I'll follow through, see what I have for Jeff. Is there anything else?
Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, and just let us know if that, White Woods, Phase Three, White Street, no report. Medical Marijuana Clinic, discussion, plan, location, area, status, and data info.
We might have, yeah, we may have postponed that discussion to this meeting. I don't know if we...
Did you get phone calls?
No, about medical...
Yeah.
No, what's going on?
I got, I got two phone calls from residents, very concerned about the marijuana clinics in Lunenburg.
Which is a good reason for us to put in the bylaw for moratorium.
Yeah, well, that's, I think they're very concerned, they see, their thought process was, they start very, huh?
Do we enact a moratorium, moratorium moratorium? Yeah, actually, that was what I supposedly made the motion on.
Yeah, we're going to put in the moratorium.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't planned location and area status and data info, it was the wording of the one-year moratorium is what we should be discussing.
No, I didn't mean for that to indicate that it was. I just put those in for maybe discussion points. You might want to talk about planned location in your moratorium period, and, because they will, the state will ask you, why you, why are you looking for a moratorium?
Because we were going to look at, we were going to look at different moratoriums that towns have utilized.
That's what we have.
Right.
We could respond to that, that we just, because you won't let us say no.
Right. Well, and they're very concerned, and they see it's something very functional in the cities versus the rural town communities, that in Fitchburg, that in, you know, there's things you go to, the bigger towns to get, that the little-town communities don't have. So I think it is something that's going to be very controversial with our residents, and we just need to be mindful of it, very careful of it, and I think we need to, as we talked about getting copies of some town moratoriums.
I have it, I have them.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have them?
I thought I put them in the packet from her to send to you. Did you not get some?
No.
Let me see. Well, anyway, going back to those two discussion points, that we can give the reasons that we need to look at planning for location and of the area status, too. How many are they close, going to be close by to us, and so forth? Those were just for, if you can, as we apply or write a bylaw, we have some discussion points. That was the reason for me putting in on that.
Yes, Nathan, we'll go to you first and work our way down.
This might be an interesting, I mean, so, I mean, I get, I get putting the moratorium in place, so we can figure things out. I think that makes sense. You know, but, you know, so things like discussion, or planned location and all that, that's kind of like, you know, so someday in a year, the moratorium would be lifted, and we kind of, we might want to have some planning guidance as to where these things go. And you had a really good point a few meetings ago about, we were talking about, how do we know, you know, like, you've gotten some phone calls, but, you know, you got like, I mean, three to five phone calls, two phone calls, okay.
Two, only two.
You know, we, Matt had the point, like, okay, the big question was, how does Lunenburg feel about this issue? And two people feel strongly, you know, keep it away. Matt had the point of looking at, like, how Lunenburg voted on the referendum. I don't know if we have, is any...
No, actually, that was in the minutes of a couple meetings ago, and we never heard
heard back from it. But I have followed up. It was about three to two, four.
In favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
What was it?
It was about three to two. About sixty percent of the town.
The vote on the override?
Wanted marijuana?
Wanted to legalize medicinal marijuana.
So, that's an interesting, that's an interesting piece of information. Since we got a fresh survey ready to go out...
That's what I meant.
Of course. Maybe this would be an opportunity to get a question about...
To add the marijuana question on your survey.
Do you want that? When you're looking for planning issues, you want that?
That's a planning issue. That's a huge planning issue.
But I know, but I mean, it's something that you have already said you wanted to do a moratorium on.
For one year.
For one year.
A year's gonna be over real fast.
Right.
Snap my fingers, it's gonna be forty-three.
You did get sent new marijuana information, because this was supposed to have been scanned to you, which is a model marijuana, medical moratorium warrant article.
Okay.
All right? And then there was a, another, there's two articles, and then there was a paper...
Yeah, I got that.
Okay, so this, you got the whole packet.
All right. All right. So, I, I think that's a great idea, Nathan, to add that on the survey question. You know, how do you feel? Do you think it's appropriate? I don't know what the verbiage, if you have an, you know, I'm thinking now, but do you have an idea of verbiage?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We should figure something out. I mean, we could, I guess, I mean, would you like to see a dispensary for medical marijuana located in Lunenburg? Yes, no? I don't care. I don't, you know, and then maybe secondly, if so, where would you, do you have a preference as to where you would like to see it?
I will put it on.
If yes, you know, where in the community would you foresee that going?
And then, and maybe a box of any concerns they might have about the sighting of those dispensaries or whatever.
I did add to the survey that they could add any sheets they wanted with any comments, too.
Yep.
But yeah, this, I mean, this would be, you know, as a planning board member, I feel like the more kind of public information we have, it's going to be an issue that some people are going to feel strongly about, possibly both ways, and it'll be the, the more accurate understanding we can have of town of Lunenburg sentiments, the better decision we can make for the town, I guess, for what happens a year hence.
Absolutely. All right, so you'll add that on, Marion?
Yes, I will.
Perfect. All right, any other questions on the marijuana clinics?
Not tonight.
All righty. Thank you guys for being so patient. You're doing a great job. Action files, those are just things that are going on in front of us. Does anybody have a question on any of the action files listed?
I have a few things for you on that, man.
On the action files?
Yes.
Go ahead.
All right. One of them is the fee system. Well, I did have a fee system handy. I did a survey on the fee systems in the communities around us, and what came up in a question was, do we need the permission of the Board of Selectmen if it is not a town meeting vote to levy a new fee? Do we need the permission from the Board of Selectmen? I talked to Carrie, our town manager, and she asked me to pose the question to the town clerk. The town clerk said she would look it up and let it, you know, but she's on vacation right now, so I don't have that back, that information back from her right now. The fee systems that I found in the, in the, and I can't put my fingers on it right at this point.
All right, well, let's talk about it when you have the data from Kathy.
Just let me briefly...
I've got it in here.
Here it is. Here it is. Excuse me. I did a survey of the surrounding towns. Bolton does not charge. Groton charges a hundred and fifty dollars.
For what, Marion? Is this for...
Or for what Nate, or no, Matthew asked for, was that if we give out an extension of a special...
Extensions. So, this is the fee schedule for extensions that Marion's talking about?
Special permits or definitive plans. Bolton, no charge. Groton, a hundred and fifty. Harvard, one half the original cost for the submittal of the special permit and/or the definitive plans. Purple, no charge. Townsend, no charge. They just put the letter of the request they filed with the town clerk's office, which we do, too. Shirley, two-year extension granted by written request. The fee is the same as the original submittal. It's very different. Littleton charges two hundred and fifty. Westminster does not charge. So, I noted that we did not charge a fee. Extension is granted by the vote of the, of the planning board, and all extensions are always filed in the town clerk's office. So, the decision that this board has to make, if it is, can be done, would be to levy a fee, levy what that fee is, and if it's necessary to go before the Board of Selectmen, we would have to place it before the Board of Selectmen. But I don't have that answer from Kathy yet. I'll have to wait till she comes back.
Okay. And, and talking with the town manager about that, supporting a fee is great. We just need to be able to substantiate where we come up with that number. You can't just arbitrarily say, "Okay, it's two hundred dollars." You need to justify that, the time it takes to accept the appeal, what Marjorie has to do, how long it takes at the clerk's office, you know, her, her clock spinning for the town of Lunenburg as we pay. So, you have to just have that process. So, as long as we can come up with, you know, the cost effective in your office of what it costs you for that, then, then that's something I would support wholeheartedly.
And you, you would, then we, and if we don't need to go before the Board of Selectmen with this committee, this board...
Can implement it, or we'll...
Or present it to the Board.
Present it, right. Come up with the process and present it to the Board of Selectmen. Yep.
Okay.
It's work, and I, I think we need to recoup our work.
Now, under the action file, I wanted you to take particular notice to the town clerk's memo on posting of meetings.
Yep, I have that in my packet.
All right.
Can I have a comment on this fee schedule?
Oh, go ahead, please.
We've moved on, right? I'm sorry, were you talking about a different thing?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. The, the fee schedule, I mean, we, clearly, it's a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty, but half the original cost for a submittal. What is the cost of a submittal for Harvard?
I'd have to look it up on the fee schedule.
That would have been nice to come here.
Because it makes a difference on how many parking places are in certain places.
And then, the same for Shirley? You've got, you know, the same, whatever their submittal fee is, but we don't see what that fee is. You know, it could be, it could be, what, five hundred dollars?
Well, see, it exchange, it changes. It changes with whatever it is.
So, a range from two to three hundred dollars would be great.
Right, and this is their current fee for an extension, so what's their current fee for a submittal?
Right. Exactly. And also, to your, to your comment, Joanna, my thought on implementing this would be that it would inhibit people from being lax and saying, "Oh, we can just get a, an extension." Well, I mean, that's kind of what laws are made for, to inhibit, to, to make people think twice about breaking them. So, I don't think that it would need to be justified by what it costs us. I would think that maybe something that was, that was excessive might be decent because for one, would, would bring money into the town for the planning department, and for two, it would not allow these people to drag their feet. I mean, and, and we can waive this fee. If, if it's obvious that, that they're being held back by something that's out of their control, it's not above us to waive it. Right?
Yep, absolutely.
So, I think, I think the higher, the better. Just my input.
Okay. Thank you. Good input.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else under action file?
You got a copy of the FinCom liaisons?
Yep.
Okay. And let me just, if you give me a moment here. You got copies of the granting of the special permits, CBA granting the special permits? I decided to put them down in action file instead of agendas because it takes too much time on the agendas.
Yes.
Question about the FinCom liaisons. That was in relation to, was that in relation to the topic about Toby or somebody, planning board being represented on the Economic Development Committee that's forming, or what was that?
No, that was a request.
The Finance Committee, like the Selectmen, anything with a budget, they have liaisons that sit with them. They got new members, so they're a full board now, so they just realigned their members on their boards.
Okay.
And I sent you a copy of who they are.
No, I saw that, and we don't have, we're not represented there right now. I don't, maybe we don't need to be, but...
We don't have a budget.
We don't have a budget. Got it.
We have a liaison from the Board of Selectmen.
Cool. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I was curious about that, too.
Yes. Yeah, they just, with the new current board, and now they are a seven-member, so they, they diverse them.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay, there were two things that were sent, sent out, Joanna, and there were members' issues. That was your submittal, Nathan, on the town beach, and then wanted to call your attention to the third page, your page, and the third page, we looked up the ownerships of property and placed it on it. You should have gotten that along with it.
Ah, yeah, I didn't, yeah, I'll have to check, check in.
All right, so go ahead, Nathan.
So, yeah, I mean, you forwarded that out, that is part of the packet, Marion? Yeah, so it was interesting to see, you know, the second, what is, before I get to this, the second one is the Town Center issue, or what was the second member issue?
That you asked me to send on to, to the two new board members, and the other one was the beach that you...
Right, and then also, we also got, the Matt had a Town Center.
Matt sent something that, today, that I sent out to you today.
Okay. Yeah, so it was interesting that they were kind of on a similar wavelength there, which was kind of cool. But, yeah, so to sum up, you know, there's been a lot of talk, especially as we discussed Emerald Place in the stages, that, you know, the planning board, how to put this, since the time I've been on the board, it seems like it's come up a number of times that, you know, Lunenburg's got some great lakes, and people enjoy the lakes in different ways. Oh, there's a lot of opportunities for residency on the lake, and the residents seem to really like the lakes they live on, as some of our board members can attest to, which is great. And, you know, I think the planning, the planning board's often talked about how it would be nice if, it would be great if we could have broader public access, and that maybe there was a little bit of a, not totally missed opportunity, but maybe we didn't get as, our full potential, like with the Emerald Place development, because there were some nice things that happened. They did a really nice job, you know, developing some of the lakefront drive there, and that's a benefit to the community. But that there might be, you know, that, we wanted more things like that where the community could, you know, in general, we're always looking for, you know, good ways for the community to recreate, and the town can provide good ways for that, but lakesfront stuff is something that has come up a number of times. So, I was just, I've been driving by that route. I think I was taking my son to driver's class or something, so I had to go by that prospect every single day, or every three days a week for a couple of months. And every time I see those lots for sale, and then I drive down and I see that empty lot at the corner, and I'm wondering, you know, and I'm seeing the town beach, which is pretty well utilized. It wasn't like a unutilized public resource. It was a heavily utilized public resource. People seemed to be enjoying the public beach, and that was, the town beach, that was great to see. And I was wondering, you know, what would it cost to get access to Whalen on the areas before and maybe some of the ways after the beach? And the thing about the town's position that might be kind of unique and special relative to what other buyers could do, is we could potentially do something with the roadway there, like get rid of it, or move it, or that kind of thing. Now, I understand this would all cost money, but it might be interesting to see what it, what kind of cost we're talking about here, because the, the land acquisitions on the lots on the non-lake side of the street don't look totally ridiculous, and...
But do you understand the lots on the other side of the street have waterfront with that lot?
Do they?
Yes.
They do. So, then there would be no other further acquisition cost, possibly.
Yes. The, the four lots that you're talking about are owned by Vernon Holman, Holman Construction. And he, with that, the, the fence going from there to the A-frame house, because the A-frame house was included with all of that land.
Okay.
When he bought that whole section, he sold the A-frame...
Yep.
To my cousin Joey Bellata, and Joey owns that A-frame, and the right-of-way in front of his home across the street is his.
Okay.
So, from his end to the fence, to the town beach, and goes with those four lots.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Cool. So, I, I think, you know, I mean, if we're, you know, I don't know what the, I just, I wanted to just put it out there. Okay, so we got all the, adding it up, one point two mi, nine million, well, that's more lots than I had anticipated.
Yeah. And Toby, that, Nathan, when Emerald Place started, that was a big thing with Toby. He wanted to have the town work with Emerald Place to buy the, the land they own and connect the town beach all the way around.
So, wait, but this is buying on, where's Mechanic Street? That's on the other side of, that would be to buy, I, I...
No, that's their address.
That's...
This is the property.
Oh, oh, I got you.
Two hundred Prospect Street?
Oh, these are all Prospect. Okay, so, this is interesting.
Are you at Two Hundred Prospect?
I'm at Prospect, I'm sorry. Damon corrected me. I was looking at the owner's address. Okay. This is the map. Okay, so, we, I'll hold this up for the viewers at home here in a moment. So, you're talking one, two, three, Town Beach is there. Yeah, so it looks like, all right, so sixty-one, and are these separate lots, this forty-seven, forty-eight?
I believe they are.
Yes.
So, Joanna, what he's saying, and what this seems to break out, is that the lakefront parcels are separate parcels from the, like, your cousin got a nice deal, and he got the A-frame and the thing across, but it looks like they're selling these as separate pieces.
Well, and I'll tell you, I own, a road goes between my property. I have water on both sides, and a road goes between my property, and it was always one tax bill. And then because of GPS, they had to separate that, and now I get two tax bills. I have a tax bill for my, yeah, I have one property. Paula's the same way. She's got Townsend Harbor Road that goes through her, her house, Townsend Harbor Road, and then her lake property.
Yeah.
And the town had to, to separate that, so now I get two tax bills, which is the same here. Huh?
One deed.
One deed, right, yeah. One deed, two tax bills.
One deed, two bills. Wow. Well, that's great. So, that's, that's...
But that's why you see that separate here.
Well, it looks like, okay, so, it looks like they may also, I mean, judging by the number of lots, it looks like they might be kind of busted out separately for cost purposes here. So, I don't know. You know, I know what, so this says, if this is right, this says, land acquisition cost of this beach would be one point three million. I don't know where that gets us down the beachfront, but again, that's the assessed value. That's the assessed value, right?
Assessed, not retail.
So, maybe it's two million. Yeah.
Could be considerably more.[1597.41]
And then you talk about whatever changes you want to make to the, the property, I don't know if this is something that there's grants available for, you know, and I also don't know, like, from a conservation standpoint, what that would mean to turn that whole side of the lake into a beach, that might be an issue.
Right.
Uh, but, uh...
Well, I like your idea, but again, uh, Joanne mentioned Toby had brought it up before with Emerald Place and that property, which would still accomplish your goals, but be a little more or less invasive, what was the stumbling block with Emerald Place and that?
Just financial, financial, yeah, because...
And that there was property owned by other people.
Between them, there was one, um, Exeris?
That sounds familiar.
I think it was Exeris that owned a piece.
Structure, and just one piece of property, if we were...
But that was always Toby's thought, is where Emerald Beach is, to go right around to the town beach and make it all Town Beach.
Yeah, and that's already utilized by them as a private beach, so it wouldn't be any infrastructure changes, probably cheaper than buying multiple lots.
And those people would still be able to use it, they, the, the, the residents of those people, sorry, the Emerald Place residents would still be able to use it as a town beach, you know, whether we owned it or Emerald Place owned it, they would still be able to buy their $20 pass, $40 pass for the year...
Yep.
...and be able to utilize it, the town will be able to recoup that money, but then you would, you know, the, the town beach would just be expanded with lifeguards and all of that.
So where was Toby talking about, though, I mean...
When you come around the rotary, and, and Emerald Place Beach is there, and you come around that rotary, the water goes all the way to the, you know, town beach, so Toby wanted to see if Exeris, and we could, where the town beach is, extend it all the way to Emerald's Town Beach.
Gotcha, gotcha, and that, and where that broke down, because of...
There were two owners, and just the cost, the town financially doesn't have any...
Any money, okay.
I mean, that might be something to kick over to the Recreation Committee to, to see if there's grants or, or whatnot, because, I mean, that's, it's not like that's so built up yet, unlike other areas where there's established residences, I mean, we're talking empty lots, we're talking about a road that's somewhat redundant, I mean, right now, it might even be a plus to get that road out of there for the beach that's there, it's not the safest, it's very curvy, it's very narrow, I've, you know, people run and walk there, and it's not, you know, it might, so, yeah, um, yeah, I don't know, you know, what to, what to do with it beyond that, but, um, there might be, now, if we, if the town really wants to, you know, add a high-quality recreation area, we know we get a lot, unlike some of the, you know, really valuable, also real variable areas where it's not clear we're get, how much town participation there is in some of our...
Oh, it'd be beautiful, it would, it would be a whole beautiful town beach area.
Yeah.
And I think it could really enhance the whole waterfront, because now the people are there, they can get, go for ice cream, go for lunch, and, and you now have this whole little strip, if you will.
Yeah, and I, I mean, financing-wise, you know, grants, I wonder if there's any way we could finance, I mean, it's a neat system they have now, I mean, to some ways, the, the town passes right now probably pay for the staffing, more or less, and not much...
Because you have to have a lifeguard on, you know, all of those things.
Yeah.
They offer a great, and, and I'm just, you know, G and Hes is fabulous, um, they offer a lifeguarding course there, my niece, I, I, I had her certified, um, they do certified CPR and lifeguarding course, and it's...
Oh, wow.
Yeah, they, they do a lot of great things over there. It's a, it's a great, very place.
Madam Chair, may I add to that?
Sure.
At the time that that was presented, um, as an idea, as an idea, um, Emerald Place was not for joining that area, because there, that beach was built into their fees, or their, I don't know exactly how they do that, we can find out a little more when they come on the 26th, but, um, that beach is, that they have, is preserved for the inhabitants of that particular project.
Is that staying a beach for the inhabitants, once they build villas there?
Pardon?
Is that staying a beach for the Emerald Place inhabitants?
Yes, there, there will still be a beach there, yes.
It's gonna be small, and in someone's backyard.
It's gonna be small.
It will be small, and the other thing is this strip that we're really, might be interested in, I mean, you could, even if we didn't touch Emerald's property, I think there's still an interesting opportunity there, just from our beach up into the other direction, towards, uh, Lemmister Road. So, I don't know, I mean, if, if, you know, I guess, if we want to make a motion to just kick that over to consideration, uh, to either Recreation Committee and/or Board of Selectmen, um, you know, it's, it's, it's like that now, as soon as somebody buys those three lots, I think the opportunity will be gone. Right, the town is in a unique position because of our control over the roadway, there's more we can do with that space from a beach standpoint than anyone, in recreation standpoint, than anyone else can do, really. So, yeah, I would make a motion to, um, kick it over to Recreation Committee and the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen to consider, is there any snowball chance in hell that they would support it in some form, and Recreation Committee to see, do they think it aligns with what they perceive as the town's goals as far as recreation? If you get a, you know, from the Selectmen, we're interested in considering, and if you get from Recreation, yes, we think this aligns, then Recreation and Board of Selectmen could carry it forward, and, you know, flesh it out and see if it can work out.
Sure.
Okay. Um, the other, uh, is I've sent out today something that Matthew sent in on the town center, but, um, that is one to be part of the study with MRPC, do you want that to go further to MRPC, too?
I would absolutely vote it to John Hume, I've not sat down and really looked at it, I opened it up on my phone, but I, I haven't had time today to sit down and look at it where I just got it, thank you for taking the time to do that.
I have a, one, one additional, I'm sorry, Lake, Lake Whalum is, is state-owned, right? It's not, it's not town-owned, it's owned by the state.
It's a great pond, yeah.
Do they charge us a fee for having our town beach on their lake?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Boat launch.
Pardon?
We also have a boat launch, town boat launch.
Yeah, we have a town boat launch, too.
Which is another addition to the benefit of adding beach there.
To the best of my knowledge, I don't think so, but that again is an inquiry, I could make, some of these things go on for years, and, you know...
Yeah, that's a good, that's a really good point, I mean, the other thing about, I think the Whalum area still has emotional significance for the town, and while I think people respect the quality of housing that's going in there, they feel that that was a, an area where there was sort of a, even if it was a privately operated amusement park, there's people who feel like it was a social, kind of public area where people can, this might help, you know, people feel like there's still, that's still a, that kind of place, I guess.
I, I further think that there's going to be some good and some bad feelings about how it was and how it is. Yeah, not just, not just reminiscing, oh, nice park, but, oh, nice condos.
All right, so you'll draft a letter, Marion?
I got no answer.
Thank you.
Should we take a motion on that, just to make sure we're all aligned?
Well, and you want to see the letter, right, so why don't we wait, make the...
Wait, make the letter, okay, sounds good.
Yeah, all right.
I would, uh, like to call you on the letter, because you know how you go on through that project.
And then once we have the letter, we'll read a vote on it. Is that clear?
That sounds fantastic, thank you very much.
Give me some time, though.
All right, what else?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Any other members' issues?
I have a question.
Yes, Matthew.
It, there's, um, this Lunenburg Village conceptual layout, do we talk about that?
Not yet.
Um, are we going to?
It's not on the agenda for today.
But it was in the handout.
Yeah, I don't...
It must be on the agenda first.
These are just the action plan, what is he looking at under the action plan?
Lunenburg Village.
It's not on the action plan.
He's looking at the Lunenburg Village documentation that was in our packets.
This is the Whalum Road, Lunenburg Village continuance of the ZBA hearing, is that what you're talking about?
Um, I don't know what you're looking at, but I'm...
Well, I just, I sent you all of the ZBA, um, hearings, and they, that was, that one was for the, um, 40B, that they're asking for increased, um, number of units within the 40B, and the ZBA heard them, and they continued the hearing, they did not make a decision.
So this is the one that went from 120 to 60 and back to the 8?
Exactly, yes, that's what it is.
These plans are horrible.
Pardon?
This is, this is a horrible plan set.
They should go to the public meeting.
They, they join, they join, there's no match line, they're at different scales, there's no indication, they, they both say conceptual layout A, it's just...
Well, we don't, we didn't have anything to do with that, that came from the...
She's just keeping us posted on this.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just to keep you posted on what the ZBA is doing.
My biggest concern was, do we think it's a good idea to have a 40B project called Lunenburg Village? I mean, isn't that what...
They, they have a right to name them, we don't name them.
Lunenburg Village?
Yeah, they can, they can name what, what they want.
We don't have any say about that?
No. Um, developer comes in with the name.
Would anybody like to have some say? I mean, that's something that I think we could comment on, at least, Lunenburg Village.
It, it isn't even under us, Matthew, it's under the ZBA, we could comment to the ZBA...
You know, I'm, I'm really sorry that my, my comment doesn't agree with you, but, but my comment still stands, that I don't think it's a good idea for the town to let a development come in, call themselves Lunenburg Village.
Okay.
Just, just a comment.
Uh, is the board directing me to do something about that, to make that comment known to the ZBA?
No, you can do whatever you like with it, Ms. Benson.
Okay.
I just don't think it's a good idea.
Well, let's, let's research that.
Lunenburg Village, I mean, what if we got, what if we, what if we decided to have a village district in the center of Lunenburg, what are we going to call it? Oh, we can't call it Lunenburg Village? Right? I mean, do we want to limit ourselves like that?
I wonder, uh, let's, let's investigate that.
Lunenburg Village Realty, maybe, Lunenburg Village Homes, you know, just, just a thought.
No, it's a good thought, it's, it's, it's a good thought, yeah, no, it is, it's a good thought.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to find out, like, what are our power, first thing would be, what are, find out from legal counsel, what are our powers there, do other towns do it, that kind of thing, but, yeah, I understand what you're saying, I mean, we regulate other things about, I mean, that, as far as, like, what the name, I don't know, they might come back and say, sure, you can regulate, or they might say, you know, no, they can call it whatever they want.
Well, and just, I think, like, to Matthew's point, it's, it's, whenever they were using the word Lunenburg, because that represents...
Sure.
...the community.
Yep.
You know, so when they're calling it Lunenburg Village, it takes away any opportunity Lunenburg has to call anything by its name.
Right.
You know, someone else could may name it Lunenburg Common, and you just keep losing...
Right.
Am I getting to some direction here, do you want me to write a letter about this, or, or something?
No, we're gonna call, we're, we're gonna, um, I'll research it.
All right.
I'll research it.
All right.
Um, what else do we have, town land?
Go, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
The, I, I think the next thing in the, um, action file is that I, my planning board comment is, I just want to keep you up to date on the fact that we need to be working towards updating the rules and regulations governing the subdivision land, and update the rules and regulations for telecommunication now.
So what are we doing to do that, you, you have it on here?
I'm going to have to find funding, and so I need to go...
Are you gonna have a meeting with Carrie to try to come up with funding?
Yeah, yeah.
What's the plan?
Well, I'm, I'm going to plan to talk first to the town manager on it.
Okay. And then you'll get back to us on that?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
I'll probably put it on for the next six months.
Nathan?
Sure, just a comment, just, I, I guess, while we're at it with the updating rules and regs governing the subdivision land, one thing that sticks in my mind is, as, while we're, since we're looking at that, uh, what's that, oh, gosh, you can't believe, I can't remember this, the, the bylaw related to subdivision that we've been discussing with, over the O'Brien Project, uh, which, which regulation?
Cluster?
The cluster bylaw, which bylaw is that?
5.6.
5.6.
5.6, yes, yes, yes. So, given the contentiousness of the interpretation, particularly around the acreage cutoffs, like how someone kicks in at 25 or something, it would, you know, if you could add it to the list of things you're looking at to, you know, work with council, I, my personal opinion is that maybe if we can sort of phase the acreage cutoff out of that, so it just applies, whether it's four acres or 25, there's probably some technical details that need to be worked out around that, but, just to avoid, regardless of how the laws, I mean, maybe, maybe we'll see some results from the legal action, but it might be good, in any event, to get some clarity, get a clearer bylaw, so we don't risk the same type of...
I, I think that would be a discussion that was, I would start with Joel.
That would be great.
Perfect. And also, I think, uh, for me, in that, was the whole parks, and what did a park look like, it was, because it was recreational space. So what does recreational space look like, is, because you, we were, is it a park, is it a playground, is it a swing set, is it just an open space with a picnic table?
And is it definitely not an easement?
Right.
Well, yeah, and then there was the whole thing, it's really phased out very quickly in, in the current bylaw, it was very ineffectual, yeah, okay.
All right. Uh, anything else, Marion?
No.
Okay.
I just had one board comment.
Go ahead.
I've got everything else.
Yeah, we're, we're on board comment, go ahead, I was going to...
All right, I just noticed that, um, well, not just noticed, but, years ago, we used to have a sign on Lancaster Road coming into town from Lancaster, down before Stillman's, with the speed limit and caution for tractors, that's been gone for a number of years, but people do fly down our scenic road as the town gets more populated, and that becomes more of a thoroughfare, so, I don't know if it's, uh, working with the Highway Department or what, to get that back down there, or something?
I would start with Jack, and let me write that down, I would start with Jack, and probably end up, we'd probably end up talking with the police department on it.
Yeah, something that was there, it just disappeared over time, I don't know if someone stole it or got knocked down.
Do you remember what the sign said?
It was just, we have one going out of town still, it's just a picture of a tractor and a speed limit, slow.
Oh, yeah, I see, I've seen that.
I don't think there's even a posted speed limit down there, on that end of town, because people do fly down the road, I know the Stillmans pull out in their tractors, and as do other people, and there's blind corners, and people shouldn't be going 50 miles an hour down there.
It's funny, because that road is no wider than any other road, it's just longer, so people get going, and they just, you're right, they fly.
The new pavement helps, too.
Um, Madam Chair, may, may I ask that the minutes be returned here?
Does someone have the minutes, Matthew?
I do, yes, yeah, I do.
If you could send those back, Matthew, do you have board comments?
I do.
All righty.
The, um, tri-town plans that were distributed, this is a full set, it's 22 plans, uh, I did not go through it as thoroughly as I had the, uh, the other Pioneer Park thing.
Yes.
But these are already approved and stamped as well.
Yes.
Um, however, there is ample labeling of existing easements on the existing conditions plan, and continues further with all kinds of easements, so I'm, I'm really not clear about why it was an afterthought that we have a, a legal, the, the fancy wording.
A license agreement.
License agreement.
You're on the license.
And they've, they've got, they've got four typical cross-sections here of the town access drive, which is clearly on town property, they laid it out, they designed it, there must be some sort of a, a boundary there, I mean, I think it's just a property boundary, but there's, um, again, more, more, uh, more errors, um, more discrepancies, um, just comment.
And aren't being caught by the peer review engineers?
No.
Not if they're on stamped, signed plans by you and the rest of the board.
Yep.
Um, this legal agreement was done with the Board of, the license agreement was done with the Board of Selectmen.
But this was done by the Planning Board, was it not?
What, I'm, I'm not...
Tri-Town?
Yes.
Plan was signed by the Planning Board.
Signed by the Planning Board, it was approved and permitted by the Planning Board, so, I mean, for, for that issue to have had to have gone to Selectmen, it indicates a problem, is a problem.
So, here's a question, um, I wonder if maybe, so easements, it's kind of a weird, these easements are sort of a weird area, because ultimately, the Board of Selectmen have, like, most the authority about them, so, but I wonder, I mean, you raise a good point, maybe, and we've, they seem to come up and bite us a lot in the last few years.
Because nobody points them out to us, and we don't know.
Because no one points them out to us, so maybe we need to make this, like, a more of part of our review process, is like, you know, so we can highlight, the reviewing engineer might think that, might be ignoring them, because he might think that's their, the, that's their issue, so maybe we need to, just as part of the review, the checklist that the reviewing engineer's going through, they specifically request reviewing engineering feedback on easements, and make a point, as a board, maybe we want to review, like, do, uh, you know, as part of our process, go through a list of all the easements on any plan, and just make sure we all understand what they are, and that we're all really signing off on them, because I think it's, it's very easy, you know, for me, anyway, I know in the past, you know, that probably, might have gone just, whoosh, right over my head, or right under my radar, or whatever.
Sure, nope, no problem there, but, you know, as, as an, as a civil engineer, I would have a hard time putting my name on this document as a Planning Board member, because it, it does have...
Well, here's one thing that might make...
And that's the great thing about you, Matthew, because now, now you'd be able to point that out, and with the, the peer review engineer here, and with the developer here, you'd be able to say, well, no, why is this easement, who's signing, and, and we, it was missed, nobody pointed out to us, it's not something, Nathan and I, we didn't get to go to plan school...
Right.
And, and, you know, we're learning as we go, and looking at these plans.
It's nothing against the board, it's...
And we understand, I understand that, it's a process, it's a learning process, and we missed it, and, and at the time, you know, a Selectman came in and said, hey, wait a minute.
Yeah, and that's a funny thing, I think one of the reasons why my impression was, if someone said something about an easement, they say, hey, look at this easement, what do you think that easement, you know, my response might be, well...
That might be a legitimate reason.
Board of Selectmen's gonna look at that easement anyways.
Spelled correctly.
You're missing the topic, Marion, you're missing the point of the, every reason, every, every plan that has an easement on it, has a good reason why the easement's there.
Yeah.
We're not questioning the easement, what we're saying is that nobody ever points out to us that the peer review engineer, you, or, or anybody points out that this is a easement, and when we have an easement, we have to go to the board, the, the Board of Selectmen.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody points that out to us, we didn't know that.
Well, actually, I did know you have to go to the board of selectmen, in fact-
After the fact.
What I knew was, they're, they're gonna have to either yea or nay it anyway, so it's like, you know, we could almost say whatever, and they're gonna, but I think it would make sense.
I know an easement has to go to the board of selectmen, we didn't know that Tri-Town had the easement to go to the board of selectmen.
Yeah, we, yeah, right.
Is what I'm saying.
Exactly, and I didn't pay that close, and apparently the board of selectmen didn't pay that close of attention either when it happened, so, maybe it would be good as a part of our process, we clearly itemize these things, so when we handed, first of all, before we handed it over, we know what we signed off on, and secondly, when we hand it over to board of selectmen, we can say to them very-
That's a deez-a-fool.
We can say to them very clearly, hey, guys, make sure you review these easements, either you gotta sign off on these-
Right.
Or this plan's gonna be messed up, because they're-
Well, and that was the good thing, because the board of selectmen, just to piggyback on what you said, they did a great job, you know, because as, as they said, there were two buildings built-
Uh-huh.
When, when they came and said, there's an easement, the town needs to, you don't have authen, the planning board doesn't have authorization to give Tri-Town an easement on town land, it's gonna go in front of the board of selectmen, so by the time the board of selectmen got it, the plan already had building one and two off. So they acted very quickly, they, they expedited the process to get that eas, that license agreement, they did a great job, but we didn't know, and we found out because a selectman came to our planning board meeting and said, hey, you guys don't have the right to give an easement, and that's how that started.
Right, so, to, so it sounds like we're kind of agreeing, we're agreeing, and I think, do you agree that it might help if we kind of have a point of our review process where we specifically deal with easements?
I definitely think it would help, I think we should prepare a checklist, punch list for the review engineer, I think that we should seriously look at updating our regulations, um-
Well, okay, just to folks, so, I, the reviewing engineer does have some sort of checklist they go through.
Yes, they do, and they have the rules and regulations, which I feel very strongly should be updated very shortly.
Okay, so, so just, so there may be other things, but now that we've kind of agreed on this, definitely the specific thing, could we update that checklist to, to call attention to, um, easements?
Yes.
And it might help, can you send us a copy of that checklist, just so we can see?
Yes.
And then if, if there's things we feel should be added to that checklist besides easements-
Sure.
Let's do the one, let's do it once, you know, you know, and that's something that every year, with bylaw changes, with rules and regulation changes, we should be reviewing that once a year to make sure, we don't want to add something, change something.
Gotcha.
But I've never seen that punch list, have you? I've, I've never seen that, yeah.
No, I don't think you have, I think it goes through-
So I think it's a good learning process, if we all get it annual, and then if we have things we want to add, or no, you don't need to look for that.
The, the punch list comes from the rules and regulations-
Sure.
Which I think is outdated.
Okay.
That concerns me.
Yeah, and that's, that's also important.
But getting funding is another question.
Yep, absolutely, but if we can start, you know, with that punch list, and, and definitely easements have to be on there, but that's why, it was just, we, we dropped, we didn't know.
Sure, well, further, the, the easements that are given, granted by the town on town land, those need to be approved by the selectmen, but only for the town land, I mean, they could be abutting private ownership, and that easement could still be an easement, but it doesn't have to be approved by the selectmen.
Sure.
No, it would have to be approved by the resident.
It would have to be reviewed and, and conforming, right.
I think we have process for that, I mean, we have clear process, yeah.
And that, that, I don't think we've, we've, we've missed, you know, someone could walk through the door next week, but, like, like, just the, the A and R that we signed for Kerry this evening, you know.
I guess my whole point about that was that this subdivision would not have been as large, the Tri-Town, the Tri-Town Landing subdivision would not have been as large as it is if it was looked at at the beginning, at the preliminary stages, that identified, well, that's your property line, why is this over here?
Assuming we didn't want it to be that large.
You realize that that-